Wolverham Regional School District School Committee meeting. It is six thirty-three AM. I see that David Sanders from Wolverham Public Access channels recording. Is there anyone else recording this meeting? We will do roll call in alphabetical order. Cheryl, Carolina?
Yeah.
Tim Collins?
Yes.
Sean Kennedy?
Here.
Lisa Murray?
Here.
Rich Redeker?
Here.
Mike Terabassi?
Here.
And Michelle Butcher?
Here.
If you please stand. Lisa and Lisa.
I want allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to take a moment to honor Gina Conne, who dedicated thirty-five years of her heart and talent for our school district. Gina was not only a founding member of the Hammond Wolverham Partners Youth Coalition, but also a cherished colleague, an exceptional grant writer, and a mentor whose wisdom and kindness shaped countless lives. Her compassion, vision, and unwavering commitment to our community has left an enduring legacy. As we carry forward the work of this district, may we strive to embody the same compassion, vision, and dedication that Gina demonstrated every day. Let us now take a moment in silence in gratitude for her remarkable life and contributions. Thank you. We are going to begin with new business. The first is to refer policy IC-ICA school calendars to the policy subcommittee.
Oh. This is a policy that has, I'm sorry. This is a policy that has to do with the creation of calendars. Currently, the policy says that we create calendars one year at a time, although it's been our practice to be more than one year ahead. And so I think that was the reason for the request for this to be a policy sub.
Because it's against policy to do it two years?
Correct.
I make a motion to refer policy IC/ICA school calendars to the policy subcommittee.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, we will do roll call vote. Cheryl?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Sean?
Aye.
Lisa?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
And myself, I. Motion carries seven zero. So we are going to continue. We are actually going to just move public comment to this person of the meeting before we move on to old business. So we will call on those that have signed up for public comment. We do ask that when called, each person state their name and their affiliation to the district, sit at the designated spot, which is theirs, in front of the microphone, and speak for up to two minutes. If you have any documents that you would like to share with the committee, please hand them to Aaron Daving before you begin. Lisa Murray will be monitoring time. Even if you've not signed up, the first person that would like to speak, feel free to go into the microphone and just make sure that you press the button so the green light is on. Thank you.
Since you all are sitting, I have to sit here. My name is Sean Catcher. I have two students in the Wolverham Public Schools. I have already submitted this to all of you, but I'm going to elaborate a little bit because on my ride over here, I was thinking about my two children, and they're very different in the way that they handle things. And so I'm expressing concerns over transportation issues in Wolverham. And as a parent, I understand that managing bus schedules and routes can be a complex task. I can equally appreciate that it's very difficult to find staff that have been in human resources since 2003. This is probably the longest where I've gone and had open positions for. So I can appreciate that. However, I feel like there hasn't been anything done past right into the governor's end that we have this great idea that we're going to roll out to the district and have these tiered structures of buses. And that's great, but what are we doing now? What are we doing today? Twenty-five minutes late was my daughter's bus today. My oldest, if this was her in the middle, in the elementary school, she would be having panic attacks because she suffers from anxiety. And I can't imagine that there's not another student that very much has the same ailment as her or that they kind of play out some of those worst-case scenarios in their head that, wow, I'm not going to be home for fifty-five minutes. I'm not going to see my parents for forty-five minutes. I've been sitting in a school for six hours, and I can't do anything except sit at a desk, be quiet, and keep to myself. And I just don't think that's right. And I understand, again, that there are restrictions here, there are constraints here, and I can appreciate that there are limitations. But between you, the school district, and you, the transportation, I'm assuming you're transportation. I could be wrong, and I'm sorry.
You are correct.
Okay. That there needs to be better communication. You all are running a business to a certain degree, and you're not running it very well because your customers, your students, are not hearing, you're not hearing that because they are concerned. And they're concerned that they're going to miss a baseball or a basketball or a dance practice because they are literally ripping their clothes off to get changed into that outfit to go to these things, to be a kid. That's what they should be focused on. And that's my comment tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Hello, good evening. Carissa Casamini. I have two children in Wolverham. I grew up in Wolverham, and I've never, ever, ever had a problem with the bus company as much as I have this year. Born and raised in this town, I'm proud to say that I live here. I'm proud of the school system that it is. But this has become such an issue. This actually started for me before school started. We do not have sidewalks where I live. I was told that my kid, who goes to Minnetown, would have to walk. I don't understand how that's possible. I was told that I didn't have a school bus. I fought between the bus company and the school, back and forth, for literally three weeks. Then to have this happen where my middle school child is upset and doesn't know whether or not he's going to be home in time every single afternoon. That's all he's thinking about all afternoon. Am I going to have a ride home from school? Should I call my parents? I'm a parent that doesn't allow my children to bring their cell phones to school. So he has to go to the office, bother the office staff. He gets embarrassed. He asks me if I can get a ride home. I take time off for work sometimes because he is so anxious that he is not going to be able to get home. A couple of days ago, he was late to school. He's anxious that he's missing learning time because of school transportation in the morning, and that is hindering his learning, and it starts his day off on a bad, bad foot. I haven't had any issues with the high school bus yet, but it has been solely based around the middle school. Getting in and out of the parking lot to pick up a child at pickup time is time-consuming. It took me forty-five minutes the other day. So I really do think that this is affecting emotionally our children at a vulnerable age, and I think that there needs to be some solutions that we need to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that is interested in making public comment this evening? Okay, thank you. So we will continue with old business. We will start with the April twenty-twenty-six Iceland trip. So we'll invite Mrs. Hicklin to come up to the microphone.
To the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is it going to work or not?
Not yet.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kristen Hicklin. I teach.
I'm Kristen Hicklin. I teach science at Minnetown. I teach forensic science, chemistry, and biology. I'm here to present a trip for school committee approval for a trip to Iceland through EF Tours. So this isn't my first time doing this. I have presented before. We went, it feels like it was yesterday, but I think it was like December of twenty-two that I came and presented about Costa Rica. And we had a wonderful trip. If I can do this. A wonderful trip last February of twenty-four. Had a great time. Brought sixteen students and one other chaperone. Thought that I would switch it up this year and do something different. I try to strive to do like an ecotourism or a STEM-based trip. So in this case, I don't know if anybody's been to Iceland. I have not, but I'm excited to go. And I apologize that this is coming in as old business. The first time I was supposed to present this was a snow day. And then the second time I was supposed to present this was December nineteenth, which was my birthday. Went to the Celtics game, did one with staff, even though they lost, that's okay. So this is actually, we already had the enrollment meeting. I have nine students that are signed up, and I realize that you haven't approved it yet. But with the approval of the superintendent, he said it was okay to have that meeting because EF, the company, said that if, for some reason, that the trip was not approved, that everyone would be refunded in full. So right now, I only have nine students, but it's very early. We try to plan so early. It would be April vacation of twenty-twenty-six. We all formed a committee, an international committee. Steve Hill put it out to the faculty. Does anybody want to be involved in this? So far, it just has been Michelle McGee and myself. Michelle went to Italy last year. She's going to Greece this year. And then Teresa Van Deety and I had done the language immersion slash ecotourism to Costa Rica. So Michelle presented already, and she's going to Greece in the spring. And Teresa is going to Spain. With our committee, we decided that we're just going to focus on one trip per year. We just thought it's too much for, you know, families and, you know, kids want to go on all these trips. It's also a lot for the faculty to absorb coverage. You know, my trip, there was just two of us, but for the Italy trip, there were quite a few staff members out, so that became an issue. You know, when we put in for the date, could we please leave on whatever that Saturday is for April vacation? I think at this point, it's tentatively like maybe April eighteenth, but they can swing us either two days prior, so while school is still in session, or two days after our requested date. So that's why we need the substitutes. But the tour is called Glaciers and Geysers in Iceland. It's seven days. We would fly into Reykjavik and then, I'm definitely not going to be able to pronounce all these words, so I won't even try. I don't know, Aaron, if you want to click through a couple of slides, click ahead. This was, I tried to edit it, the presentation that I sent to Aaron, but I think that Aaron became the owner, and I couldn't delete some of the slides I wanted to. This was just a QR code for the meeting that we had. But we would fly into Reykjavik and then spend three nights there and then go over to Holstlur. These are pictures from our Costa Rica trip. Just wanted to show you how incredible, what an amazing opportunity it was for those students. You know, just being completely immersed in it. We literally stayed in the rainforest one night in the pouring rain, even though we were told that it was the non-raining season. Well, it rained. We expected a little, but not that much. You know, we hiked volcanoes. We kayaked on man-made Lake Armal. We talked about water power. We went to the oldest coffee plantation in the country. You know, learned how chocolate is made and processed and picked and everything. We went to a pineapple plantation. I could go on and on, like hot bubbling like sulfuric acid pools and some of the, you know, mountainous areas. So did whitewater rafting and so forth. So just would love to be able to bring students again to do that. Leah Fitzgerald, who is another science teacher, is going to be coming with me. I've used EF before. I did do a lot of research, and I did look into two other companies. One called Explorica, who I know Michelle McGee is going with to Greece. And they were great, but I had some hesitations. One of the comments was that if we were, for some reason, diverted, we would have to go to, or no. Because if I didn't have a certain number of students, but they didn't tell me the number, that we would be diverted to another destination. And I just really don't know what other destination could be quite like Iceland. And then the other company that I looked into was called Passports. And they were telling me that if you don't have a certain number of students, and again, they couldn't nail down the number of students, that whatever I said I was going to charge, if I didn't get enough students, that it would be increasingly more, like two hundred dollars here, another two hundred. So I just, I felt really uneasy with that. So I stayed to what I know is tried and true. I was in Malta two summers ago. Malta, like so remote, off the coast of Africa and Sicily, and there was an EF office. So I just know like how I've dealt with them. There's always somebody there and on call. So the price is a little bit more than Coca-Cola, a little bit more than Costa Rica, although Costa Rica is up now to thirty-eight hundred from EF. And so Iceland is even a little bit more. It's forty-five, forty-nine, which is why we planned so far in advance. It comes with, these are some schools that have, you know, also traveled with EF, just so you know that, you know, we're not the only ones. But we totally appreciate that the school committee and superintendent support these trips. We start planning so far in advance because that is a big number. So it worked out. We had a meeting beginning of December, and it comes out to two hundred and seventy-nine dollars per person. I'd love to click on that little link, the Iceland, but it's like a six-minute video, so I don't know if any, we don't need to do that now. But if anybody wants to, you know, get that presentation, they can look at it. I want to get on a plane and go tomorrow. We're going to do, you know, the geysers. We're going to do the Blue Lagoon. We're going to do the Black Sand beaches. We're going to do hydropower and geothermal energy. My oldest is an environmental engineer. She went and did a class, well, many, many classes, with sustainable energy. But she went for a month and spent time in Iceland and then did a project and got credit for it. So ever since she's been talking about it, it just seems like something that would be amazing to go. So that's kind of the gist. That price includes everything. The only thing extra would be tips for the tour guide, the local people. It includes all the meals. And then the, oh, there's the Blue Lagoon. I can't wait for that. And then the only other thing is the transportation to and from. Last year when I went, families chipped in. I think it was like fifty dollars each so that parents wouldn't have to drive to Logan Airport at four in the morning. So that's pretty much it. So I think I covered mostly everything, but if there's any questions.
I have a question. Do you have students who just are dying to do it? Can I follow?
Yes, we do. Trina Roberts and I spoke about that. She said that we do have a student that would like to go and I believe is in the custody or care of a foster family with DCF. And so she was going to help me reach out to DCF because she said that they would fully fund it. And we also need to do some fundraising. I know I had one student sign up already, and they have, it's almost like a GoFundMe link, but it's, you send it to, you know, your family and friends. And this boy has already had a birthday and then the holidays. And so then he'll have all these others. But I looked at his account and everybody's account just to see where we are, and he already got quite a bit looking for ideas for fundraising. So if students do want to fundraise to defer that cost, Ms. White, Ms. Joanne White, our assistant principal, mentioned that one of her grandchildren was selling like good old school magazines and that the school, I can't think of what school it was, like made a good amount of money. And I was like, you know what? I think I'm old-school. I like sometimes a magazine to kind of like look through instead of like an online subscription. So that might be something. You know, as advisor for NHS, we're always looking for other ideas too for fundraising. But, and not to step on anybody else's toes, but it would be great for students who want to go. I know Michelle McGee was going to be working or talking to the What Grant people to see if potentially they could help pay for, you know, either some kind of a scholarship or something like that. EF also has a link that the kids, and I encouraged them to apply for the scholarship. They only have to submit like a video of themselves talking about where they want to go and why it's important to them, and they could potentially get a thousand-dollar scholarship that way.
You feel pretty confident that anyone who wants to go will be able to go?
I, we have a, we have a committee, international committee, and we're working on that. We met at the beginning of, we met in June. We met at the beginning of the school year, and we definitely need to revisit that. So in case that does come up for that equity piece, then anybody who does want to go would be able to go. Yeah.
This trip is April twenty-twenty-six?
April.
April twenty-twenty-six. But I didn't know the actual calendar. I gauged it based on last year's April vacation and this year's. I think, you know, nothing is set in stone yet, but it would be April vacation. I don't, I went to Costa Rica, February vacation. I don't really want to go to Iceland in February vacation.
And this, this trip is for eighth graders, right?
It's, it's for, it's for nine through twelve. So we did send information to.
To the eighth graders.
To the eighth graders so that they would be able to, you know, enroll as well. I did have one meeting, but it was, like I said, EF was kind of like, you know, you want to have a meeting so that there's more time to pay, and I totally agree with that. But it was right for the holidays, and it was such a short time in between Thanksgiving and the holidays this year. So they allowed me to extend a discount, but they offer a two-hundred-dollar discount. So I'm going to try to have another meeting in the spring, sometime maybe in May before we leave for the end of the year to see if there's any more students who might be interested or families. And then also ask Mr. Hill if I could potentially have a table out at maybe either eighth-grade parents' night or also open house, February sixth for Minnetown.
Yeah, okay, so it's for eighth through eleventh for next school year, which there will be ninth and twelve.
Correct.
Great, okay. Very good on that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a maximum amount of students that are allowed to travel?
Well, it's on the paperwork. It said fifteen spots would be guaranteed, and then it would be up to forty-five. You know, I'm a little disappointed with just the nine, but like I said, it was kind of tough with the timing and what we're trying to, what some families, the feedback that they gave back to Mr. Hill, that would be nice if we could have a, when we could have it forecasted so we would know, okay, so Mrs. Hicklin's, you know, Mrs. McGee is going to Greece this year. Mrs. Hicklin is going in twenty-twenty-six to Iceland. And then like we have like two, I think it's two other teachers who want to. So there were some names that came up and that they might like to start thinking of a trip that would involve France and Germany and like a history piece with that so that we can project out like at least three years so that families could say, well, you know, shouldn't I go to Iceland? But maybe I really might rather go to Germany or France so that if they can only, you know, obviously do one trip, then they'd be able to have that information.
Thank you. Any more?
So any country with the name Iceland would be a hard sale right now, so.
Sure. I'd rather go to Iceland than Greenland, and I have my, this is super distracting, but amazing, life-changing, the heated vest I'm wearing, it's still on, I'm sorry. I'm good to go.
Enjoy. I make a motion to approve the April twenty-twenty-six Iceland trip for Minnetown Regional High School.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, we will do roll call in alphabetical order. Cheryl? Tim?
Yes.
Sean?
Aye.
Lisa?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
And Michelle? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy. Thank you, Mrs. Hicklin.
Thank you.
So we are going to continue. So we will move on to the transportation free care options. So I invite Mr. Otto Morton, the Lord Partner of our. Thank you for being here.
Welcome, how you doing? Thank you, thank you all for having me again. I think first and foremost, like while I was sitting up the PowerPoint, I wanted to extend an apology to the students, to parents, and the district for the inconveniences and difficulties that the transportation delays has caused. It's not purposely done. It's not intentionally done. It's just something that's happening right now. It's not like we're working, not working on the situation we are. As the lady said earlier in public input, it's a time period where trying to find bodies is a difficult thing. There is openings in schools. There's openings in other jobs. And it just seems that a lot of people do not want to be a bus driver. A bus driver is probably like having a classroom just moving down the road. It seems tough to find teachers. But we're trying to find creative and innovative ways in order to recruit and to retain people. So as you will see in the PowerPoint, there's a lot of things we've been trying to do besides working with the Department of Education and Attorney General's Office about this particular problem. And one of the things when I came in to Lord Partner of our Billups Valley, this is my second year in this position. And I did ask, when was the last time that we had a full complement of drivers in all of the seven districts in mainly in Hammond Wolverham and the responsible was right before COVID? So right before COVID, we did. How long that was, somebody told me it might have been like two months. So for whatever reason, it seems to be seems to be that people do not stay in the transportation industry for long periods of time, or they go elsewhere, or they're trying to compete with their first students and things like that in Springfield, but I do think there's a difference of driving a bus in Springfield as opposed to driving a bus in Hammond, Wolverham, or any of the other six member districts that we have. So with that being said, I just wanted to make sure that it's not something that we take lightly, um, if anybody knew we did something that we want to take pride in the services that we provide, and there is no reason for us to take pride in the services that we're providing currently in the Hammond, Wolverham Public Schools, our regional public schools. So as you can see, we can go to the next slide, that the actual mission of LPB, see just around people, what it is, is for us to, um, provide districts, um, support and success to students by having, um, quality, high-quality shared programs and services in a cost-effective manner. Well, we failed on a piece of high quality recently with the fact when it comes to transportation, so we're continuing to work on this on a daily basis and trying to make sure, our people work hard from the perspective, the way that we're set up, that we provide transportation to and from seven member districts with three garages in Agwam, East Long Meadow, and Wolverham. Um, and each and every day, you'll see when we go through some of the slides, that our transportation manager in the Wolverham garage is putting together a schedule in the morning, depending on if somebody calls out, and then putting the schedule again, piece by piece, in the afternoon if somebody calls out too, because we have no substitutes, we have no spares. So if anybody calls out, it is a ripple effect throughout the system. If you go to the next slide, we currently have, you have a two-tiered system in Wolverham, uh, Wolverham and Wolverham Regional Public Schools, with thirty-three routes, which is also thirty-three drivers, ten point nine two, uh, routes for specialized transportation. We have, we would like to have two spare drivers for regular transportation. We would like to have one spare driver for specialized transportation. We do have ten monitors for specialized transportation, and the average daily hour, weekly total for drivers and monitors right down in the Hammond, Wolverham Regional Public Schools are twenty-nine, twenty-nine hours. If you go to the next slide. So this is the current, uh, transportation structure. This is at the time that took off the current bell schedule, and then the current drop-off and pickup windows. Obviously, we're not meeting those pickup windows right now. We could be anywhere in the afternoon, especially from ten minutes to even fifty-five minutes late to picking students up, which is definitely a problem. You go to the next slide. So the current structure, well, one back, up, up, one. So the current transportation structure, we have two tiers. This is what the cost is right now for FY twenty-six for projecting, if you stay with the two-tiered system. It is, uh, two million, three hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars for regular transportation, and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventeen for one career tech that goes through our program with Bray Hill, and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventeen for one Mecca bus, and nine hundred and sixty-five thousand and two dollars for specialized transportation. Next slide. So this, there's some of the issues that have come up and you've heard in public input too, and it's due to the shortage of employees that we have in the Wolverham garage. Um, you have twenty-four of the thirty-three routes that are covered for regular transportation, and these leaves nine open routes. You have seven point nine out of the ten point nine two for drops for specialized transportation, and so at least three open routes. If I actually put nine two is, we share specialized transportation. So different districts like Lelo and Hammond, Wolverham, depending on how many kids they have on that bus, that is, who has afforded that more cost on that specialized transportation. We have zero out of two spare drivers for regular transportation, so there's two open positions. We have zero out of one spare drivers for specialized transportation for its one open position, and there's currently no substitute drivers for the Hammond, Wolverham Regional Public Schools. And we have eight out of ten monitors for transport, specialized transportation, so we have two open positions. Next slide. One more? So I put this in here just to kind of show you, go on, it's part of the problem too. So transportation, um, tiers by districts, Agwam has four tiers, East Long Meadow has three tiers, Hammond, Wolverham has two tiers, Long Meadow has two tiers, Lelo has three tiers, South of Tallahassee has three tiers, and West Springfield has four. You will see that Long Meadow and Hammond, Wolverham are the ones that only have two tiers, but Long Meadow only has seven buses. You have thirty-three buses, so it's a little bit different. And if you actually look at the average daily hours, weekly total by district, you will see that Agwam's drivers and monitors have thirty-six hours each week, East Long Meadow thirty-two, Hammond, Wolverham, twenty-nine hours, Long Meadow twenty-four hours, Lelo thirty-two hours, South of Tallahassee thirty-five hours, West Springfield's thirty-six hours. The reason I bring this up, this is one of the reasons why we can't retain drivers in the Hammond, Wolverham, because the average weekly hours are pretty low, so they're not, they're making the same hourly range, but they're not making the same total because their weekly hours are lower than some of the other districts, so people prefer to go to other districts. Next slide. So back to some of the other issues, we had to combine routes, this is what you're seeing now, but to combine the routes in order to get kids to and from school, so it's making longer routes, like I said, from anywhere from ten to fifty-five minutes late. Um, we have all hands on deck, all hands are in the pile trying to drive buses from our Transportation General Manager, our Assistant Transportation General Manager, all our, uh, managers, our supervisors, and even our mechanics are driving buses. Um, later arrivals in the morning, when I actually pulled this data, it had been twenty-three days total, it's probably close to thirty now. Later arrivals in the afternoon, we're sixty-nine, we're probably close to even seventy-five or eighty in the afternoon. Um, and this year we rolled out a new parent app called My Ride K Twelve. Um, when you combine routes, that app does not work, because it cannot read two different buses when you combine the two different routes. So if it's a single route, you still will be able to track your kids' progress to and from school, but when we combine routes, the app does not work. Problems with notifications and fa- to families about tardies of the buses, we've been working on trying to get that notice out a little bit earlier, if possible. We try to send it out at nighttime to the district, um, and then we try to send it out for the afternoon delays before eleven-thirty. The issue we're trying to work, and I've been working with superintendent provosts, is that burden should not be on the district to notify families, but we're trying to find a way to notify families from LPB, see to notify them when buses will be late and how long they will be late, but it's about a problem getting to your student information system, so we're trying to find a way to work with our current student information system and, um, title technology. So we have Reddick here, we're working with Title Tech to try to work something in place in order to make sure we can do the notifications to families. Um, students being later missing the after-school activities, that was spoken about in public input. Um, we're trying to make sure that students can get to those after-school activities, they shouldn't have to run home, they shouldn't have to rush. This is something they need after being six hours in school, after being on a bus a long period of time, they need these activities, and I'll pull it here to parents that would hear with public input. Uh, there's more traffic on the roads because parents are driving their kids to school and picking them up from school because of the quality of services we're providing right now. Next slide please. So due to some of the accidents that we've been working on to remedy the current transportation issues, the combining the routes is something we have to do in order to make sure we didn't get kids to and from school. Um, as I said before, all hands on deck driving the bus, everybody that can drive a bus is driving a bus right now. So that's why some of the times when there's phone calls to the garage, it may take a while to get a lot of person, but we have put places and measures in place to facilitate that, so when the phones ring there at Wolverham, then we actually go over to Central Office of Bray Hill, we are taking messages, and we're actually giving messages to the Transportation Administrative Assistant, which is in the Agwam garage. So we're taking phone calls, we're talking to a lot of people when those phone calls are being made. Um, we're utilizing spares of the two drivers from other garages when, when available. Um, we're also utilizing drivers from other garages on school days, on no school days, and PD four and half days, when that, when that comes up for other districts. We're shuffling the late routes around, and we're trying to make sure the same route is not late all the time. That's a difficult thing. We're trying to do that each and every day to try to figure out what's going on, to try to share the latest. I know that sounds like a oxymoron, but we're trying to share that latest in that particular piece, to make sure the same route is not late each and every day, but if logistically it's going to be longer, then we try to make sure those same routes are probably going to be late, because we don't want to make it any more of a problem than what it really is. Um, when buses are late, we try to reverse the drop-off where we're also two, so the same students aren't always dropped off last. Next slide. So we just recently have a CBA with the UFCW, who is our transportation, uh, union. So we're monitoring, incentivizing drivers and monitors through our CBA to pick up extra runs when they're already scheduled routes. So now, if they finish their routes, they can also pick up a run and come over. I think this is just recently been implemented. I think that's going to make an impact on actually the times and different delays. People are asking what we're doing now. These are some of the things we're doing now. That has been started since, probably coming since December, so probably will see an order change, um, this month coming up. Uh, monetarily incentivizing drivers, uh, monitors through the CBA for not missing work. So I know to me, that was a hard thing, just to pay people extra just for being at work, right, you know, but we're something, we're trying to be innovative and creative. We may not be able to pay like first student, but we had to find some things in the contract to incentivize people to not use as many days, because as I said before, when they call out, it's a ripple effect throughout our transportation, um, system in order for us to put the routes together and, and try to make sure we can even provide the routes in a time manner. Um, we're working with the Valley Opportunity Council, and to see if any of the homeless and migrant families in Chickapie and in West Springfield, hotels are even eligible, are eligible and interested in employment as bus drivers and monitors. Um, we're working with the Hammond County Sheriff's Department to see whether or not it's possible to use correctional officers, retired correctional officers, and substitute drivers after we train them for CDLs and for the seventy, because we do it all for training at our facility. Um, they're used for, uh, work details when you see them doing traffic and stuff, so I've been talking to, um, you know, Chief Ware over there, that that may be a possibility, just trying to work out the logistics and the contract of how that would work, of whose employee that would be. So we're trying to find pools of people that can, we can utilize and train. And then, um, we hired a bilingual, uh, Spanish-speaking bus trainer. As of November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the, the CDL license exam is now offered in Spanish and Portuguese. So we hired somebody that was bilingual, maybe that would produce some more people to drive our buses too. And then, as number twelve, we've done it every day, every door direct mailing. You probably received these in Hammond, Wolverham, these carts, these are bilingual, there's English on one side and there's Spanish on the other side. Um, we did that during a week of Thanksgiving, um, and we reached out and put the mailings in Hammond, Indian Orchard, Lelo, the Boston Road area, and Springfield, and Wolverham. Actually, thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six flyers went out in these areas. Next slide. Um, and the recruiting efforts continued during the week of November twenty-fifth. Um, we also did another seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty-nine flyers that went out in the Chickapie Register, which covers Chickapie, East Springfield, Holyoke, South Hadley, West Springfield, and the flyers were also placed in their journal register. I didn't know there was a journal register, but there is, which circulates in Bonsville, Burnfield, Fis- Fishtale, Monson Palmer, Thordike, Three Rivers, and Wells. And then we just now did another every-door direct mailing recruiting effort that went out on December ninth, and that was in Agwam, West Springfield, and that was another twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine flyers that went out in those areas. So additional flyers were also sent to community and local colleges, AAA, the unemployment office, FedEx, and UPS for laid-off drivers. We figured we'd try, try to target another pool of people. Um, one of the things that tells us to go to the, um, the senior center, different things like that. The problem with targeting senior center and those individuals, once they get tired of it, or they get on the bus and drive a bus when they're full of kids, and they say, I'm done, I can't do this, they're gone because they're already retired. We're trying to find a group of people that are hungry and want to work. We figure that college students, the community college students, probably would be interested, maybe if they can work the schedules around doing that particular piece. So we're trying to target a pool that we've not targeted before. So a total of seventy-two thousand flyers were circulated in over twenty-one communities during both of these direct mailings. Next slide. So the data from the direct mailings and the actual, um, you know, the full court press, I'm trying to do the recruiting and retention. So the week of the November twenty-fifth mailing, we got, uh, twelve bus drivers, seven monitors. We had one driver complete CDL training, and that bus driver started in the Hammond, Wolverham Public Schools on Tuesday. So we got one driver since this has transpired. We have others in the hopper, we have three drivers that are studying for the permits, we have six others in various stages. Everybody on that left side from the twenty-fifth, uh, mailing are scheduled to go, they completed CDL and seventy training, they will be coming to the Hammond, Wolverham Public Schools. On this side, you have the December ninth mailing, in which we got seven bus drivers, four monitors, eight individuals in various stages. As you can see, from interview dates to core, uh, core backgrounds, checks, permit, preparation, orientation. Some of those could come over also, but some of those, those areas are probably in Agwam and West Springfield area. But the ones on the left-hand side from the, uh, November twenty-fifth are all coming to this area if they complete the training. Next slide. So I did a comparison, and this is for options that we're trying to remedy the current transportation system. All I'm just proposing is the fact that if you stay with the two-tiered system, we're trying to get to that full complement of those drivers, which we've not been totally successful in this time period, but we are making progress there, slow but sure progress for the three-tier option. As you can see on the, on the two-tier options, thirty-three, thirty-three routes, or thirty-two drivers needed, ten point nine two for, um, specialized transportation, and as I said before, twenty-four out of thirty-three are filled right now, nine open positions, and seven point nine two out of nine point two specialized transportation are filled, which are these three open positions. And we have zero out of two spare drivers and two open positions. On the three-tier side, if we look at a three-tiered system, we're looking at twenty-eight routes for twenty-eight drivers. It still would be ten point nine two, that is something to change depending on how we look at that particular piece, we may, may not be able to go down. Um, so we still would need two spare drivers, one spare driver for specialized transportation, and we still would need two substitute drivers. Next slide. So back onto the two-tiered system is, we still have zero out of one, um, spare driver for specialized transportation, um, so at least one open position, zero substitute drivers, eight out of ten monitors for specialized transportation, so two open positions, and from the direct mailing and flyers, we have nineteen drivers and eleven monitors in the hopper. The average daily hours and weekly totals for monitors under the two-tiered system is twenty-nine hours. If you go to a three-tiered system, from the, for direct mailing and flyers, like I said, you have nineteen drivers and eleven monitors in the hopper, an average daily hour, weekly total would be thirty-four hours compared to twenty-nine hours. Next slide. So we come to cost for current two-tiered system is two million, three hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars for regular transportation, seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventeen for one career tech bus, and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventeen for one Mecca bus, nine, uh, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand and two dollars for specialized transportation, for a total transportation cost of three million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. If you go to the three-tiered system, the cost actually goes down for regular transportation is two million dollars, two million, eleven thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars for regular transportation. The Mecca bus does go up, um, and the career tech goes up, goes up to seventy-seven thousand, three fifty-four, it went up for everybody in the member districts, not just Wolverham, but it goes up. And it was, say, the nine hundred and sixty-five thousand and two dollars for specialized transportation, for a total of three million, one hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And the monetary difference between the two systems is three hundred and twenty-two thousand and twenty-three dollars. Next slide. Uh, these are the current systems, the current, um, bell schedule, and on the other side, you have the recommended bell, bell schedule. I talked it to, uh, superintendent provosts. These are just recommended. We are, we have room to move, uh, in these particular time periods. They may not work the current, the way they're set up. They have to give you some type of rejection when we were looking at, but these are just recommended, but we have some room to, to move around in these time periods if they don't currently work the way if you so choose to go to a three-tiered system. Next slide. Is it the same thing that you have the drop-off times you currently have, and then the drop-off windows are projected if you go with a, with a three-tiered system? But like I said before, that we have some room to move in this, in these time periods, but what you're trying to look for, we just have to base it off your schedule, your bell schedules. If you understand, you have to keep the time on learning, and there are also two, nine hundred and four a second a day, and nine hundred dollars for elementary, so we keep that in mind, that will be on your own, but we will work with the district in order to make sure that we have schedules that work for everybody, and then we will build our projected drop-off and pickup times based off those bell schedules. Next slide. Are there any questions?
I, I have a few questions. First of all, I wanted to just thank you for coming here to make the explanation that you did tonight, and to share the efforts that you've been making to try to improve transportation for our students. Um, I think you heard with your own ears tonight how difficult this has been for our families, and, um, it's very, I think, important for them to hear what you've been doing to try to improve. Let me ask, uh, I have three questions in general. Uh, one is a math question, and I wanted just to ask if I'm thinking about this the right way, and anyone who can check my math on this, um, let me know if I'm understanding. So if I go to your, um, first slide that talks about the current transportation structure issues, um, I think it was, I'm not exactly sure what it was, but if someone said, due to how we can see employees shortage in the Wolverham Regional Public Schools, twenty-four out of thirty-three routes, that one? What I'm, what I see from that slide, if I'm understanding this correctly, is you need fifty-seven, is it fifty-seven staff of all different kinds in order to operate this system right now, and seventeen of the fifty-seven positions are open, is that correct?
If you're combining the actual nine that's open, and then actually the, the three open positions, where you're getting the, oh, and plus the spares and the substitutes, yes, correct.
And so then, if I look at the, um, options to remedy the current
Yeah.
Transportation issues, if we didn't add anybody, let's say if none of these prospects you have pan out, I, I would say that you would still have forty staff, but you'd need forty-four positions, so you'd be four short in that.
Correct.
Is that correct?
It would be less numbers, so we'd have less routes, so we'd be able to, uh, be more effective with the four compared to the, I think you said fifteen or sixteen there were, minus now.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful for me. Um, you, when we talked briefly before your presentation, you know, I said I think some of these times would have to shift, really concerned about the super early start time of the high school, and you said as long as you work within the window, you'd be able to do that. Can you say a little bit more about what you mean about our window of flexibility?
I mean, whatever you set the time will be, then we will build off that. So if your high school is your first one, which usually it is in most districts, whatever you set that time is, then that's how we would layer the tiers after that. So then, whatever you said, it said, I know seven fifteen is often early, so when I saw that, I'm like, okay, at least it gives you something, a visual to look at, so if you move that back to whatever, seven thirty or whatever it may be, we will work from there for you all to have a projected drop-off and pickup time.
So to help me understand how that might work, can you help me envision where the buses are going on in tiers? I know they go to the high school first. Would all of them then go to the middle school?
Yeah.
Or would some of them split off and start elementary runs?
Well, elementary would be a little bit later, but they would probably go high school, make sure all high school was done first, then we have, because the middle school's a little bit, um, later, but you'd probably be able to break them up, and someone would already start the middle school right after there. And then even the middle school run, then someone would be able to start, to break it up, to do the elementary, to go on that particular piece. Right now, we're kind of pushing them all towards a time to do high school, then you got the middle school, and you got the elementary, and you have, what, four elementary schools? So then that's the, the top of these, but then they can already, while they're doing some of the middle schools, because it wouldn't take as many, because you have that staggered time, a stack of tiers, then therefore you have the windows in between, enough of a window time, that someone can already start the elementaries, are already be able to drop off. I think we would have more time in order to do that particular piece. Right now, it's almost like we're putting all the resources to do high school, then whenever they can drop, if they drop early, they can start the middle school, and so forth and so forth.
And then the, the last question I think I have at this time is just sort of looking at it from the student perspective. I, I understand all this in terms of trying to make the system run, but what does it look like for a student? Will my ride be longer, shorter, the same?
It will definitely be longer than, I mean, shorter than what it currently is in the afternoon now, so I can definitely, definitely say that. I think it'll be about the same time that they're actually on a bus, it wouldn't be much longer. If, if we were in a perfect system, we were operating the way we should be operating, I don't think the time would be any longer than what the system, what is supposed to be, which it currently is not now.
Thank you.
Has any thought been put into having the elementary students go first, and then the high school, and middle school after?
It's the time that you have school that dictates how we do our bus delivery. So, I mean, if you're, right now, high school's the first ones that have to be in school, as opposed to the elementary schools, I mean, that's the way we currently do that particular piece.
But wouldn't we have to change, under the three-tiered system, we'd have to change the time? the times of school anyway, right?
Yeah, that would be something the school committee would have to talk about and whether that's the will of you to put your elementary schools first as opposed to your secondary schools. I don't know if that's not something, we're going to operate how you may operate with your bell schedule, whatever it may be. I know other districts and other places have made and doing research that it's better for older kids to start a little bit later than it is for elementary kids and then elementary, but then on the flip side of that coin, when like we got right now, little kids are out in the morning when it's the dark still as opposed to, so you, you know, there's some con- pros and cons in both situations.
Okay. So whatever we come up with for start times, you can work around that?
We will try to base our drop-off and pick-up windows based upon your start times. I will continue to work, if you so choose to go to a three-option system, I'll work with the superintendent to make sure that those pick-up windows are within that, those time periods that you have, but also gives us enough time in those windows to make sure we get all the high school kids in first, in the middle school, and then all the elementary.
Have you thought of doing like a part-time drivers? Like uh it just happened, I got a haircut this morning, I was over at Roots in Wilbraham and Matt, the bartender, was saying, hey, I would drive in the morning, you know, before he comes in to do the haircuts. And I'm like, he goes, but I couldn't do the afternoon.
We can do that, we can work with that, because the substitute drivers have to pick your own schedule.
Okay.
So you can, if you want, I got a couple extra flyers, you can fly them flyers.
I'll bring them tomorrow morning, okay.
I have a question. Um do you anticipate, if you move to a three-tiered bus system, do you anticipate, of your current pool of drivers, do you anticipate losing drivers because of the reduced hours? And then with that, do you also anticipate that you won't have as much difficulty finding drivers because there are more hours that are offered?
I don't think we'll lose anybody. What I have told superintendent provost is I'm turning all my cards over and pushing my chips to the middle of the table, because this is the last stand ever of what we can do in order to prove this, improve the situation. I will not, this is a decision you all have to make, I will not push either way, because I want to make sure a hundred percent that the the quality of service is is better than what it is right now, it has to be, no matter what. Um but to answer your question is, I don't think we will lose drivers, I think it's been hard to maintain drivers when they're seeing the average daily hour totals in other places, that's why they want to go to other places, because they're, even though they got the same hourly rate, they're making more money because they have more average daily hours than we do. And I think it'll be easier to recruit people now knowing this and people want to come over, because now they see that there may not be the highs, because you could still have Agwam and West Springfield, which are four tiers, but you're right behind three tiers.
Thank you.
I um I I got a bunch of emails from parents and one of the parents had said that they thought that um for some reason in the busing community, that the Hamden Overhand Regional School District was not desirable. Is is was, is that a reason why people are not?
I've never heard that.
Okay, I hadn't either, so I wanted to check with you.
Did they elaborate on why it's not desirable?
They did not.
I would say that if that is the case and the words were used, not desirable, it may be because of the fact of the average daily hour total, it's because that was one of the lower ones besides Long Metal, but Long Metal only has seven buses. So people understand what they're doing when they're going to the East Long Metal Long Metal Garage, they understand that they're going to have more hours and it's going to be a different type of population, different type of ride. Two of his buses are out-of-district buses, Mecco buses and plus the Voltec bus, so they understand what it's going to be.
The hourly wage that a driver is paid, that's contractual, correct?
Correct.
The union?
Yes.
Um and every district gets paid the same?
Yes.
So no driving for one district or driving for another doesn't increase or decrease how much money?
No, it's just the average daily hours is where that differential is.
Is there any way to pay bonuses to those who go to a district where we, you know, we are in dire need of drivers, is there any?
So that would have to be a union thing for them to either approve or even to bring that up, and I think what we tried to do was at least to answer your question, to try to get more, we incentivize them through the current C D A that they can pick up uh extra, they, within their, their, everybody's guaranteed two point five hours in a route. Within that two point five hours, you finish early, you pick up another route, they're guaranteed another half an hour and then anything over that, you still get paid in increments with that. I think that's going to increase some people to pick up more shifts, because some of their routes are not as long as others in the district and the fact we incentivize them, if you have ten days to own the books at the end of the year, you'll get a thousand dollars. So I think we're trying to sort of do with the thing that you're asking, whether or not there's a differential, because we've had lack of drivers in Hamden Overhand, instead of paying them a different hourly rate, we're trying to incentivize across the board.
What is the hourly rate that we think?
I think uh we just add a contract after the three-year, this three-year contract, they'll be at thirty dollars an hour at the end of the three years. So this year, they're probably about twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Okay, so it's a twenty-seven, twenty-eight now and then it'll increase next year and it'll be thirty dollars.
Yeah, they'll step out of the thirty.
Is that based on experience or just everybody?
No, it's based on experience, it's not across the board, so you have to have years coming in, so.
Between what and what would a first-year driver get? I have no experience, you guys could be your C D L, I start driving, what do I mean?
They're probably be like around twenty-five, twenty-six dollars.
Do you have the data on the current three-tiered school systems and how many times buses are late?
I can probably get that data, but I don't have that data with me right now.
I mean, if we go to a three-tiered system and still have the same consistent problem is what I'm concerned about and I'm hopeful that when you get the data and and send it to us, if it shows a three-tier, you don't have the kind of.
I would say you won't have the same volume that we have right now, you can't say that I won't have any lateness or whatever it may be, and it may not be to the extent of being fifty-five minutes late, you may have some days where some buses are ten or fifteen minutes late, or especially the West Springfield and Agwam, you got big E traffic, when the big E comes, we're going to have late buses. So therefore, there's going to be times where that, that data's going to be skewed, but I will guarantee the fact that if you go to a three-tiered system, it will not be the same problems and situations that you currently have with a two-tiered system.
And and as you collect this data, I would ask you to eliminate the days during the big E.
That's a whole month.
Nobody who lives across the river, you know, they understand that, but so that's that's an anomaly that 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 we wouldn't be facing here.
No.
Um but I'm curious to see if the three-tier, you know, and I know there are circumstances where you're going to have a late bus now and then, you know, on a, on a, on a, somebody gets sick that day or something like that, but I I want us, I want to see that they do better.
Okay.
The three-tier will do better for our parents and our students.
And I think the thing is you're also going to see if the, I'm going to have to stream on that data, because those other three-tiered places have spares and have subs, so compared to where we have none of that right now, so I'm going to have to look at that particular piece and how does a call-out affect them. A call-out in Agwam doesn't affect the same way as a call-out at the Hamden Overhand, because they can plug a spare, they can plug a sub in, and we have none of those currently right now here. So I just want to make sure that when I am able to compile this data in a way that you understand that sometimes that is masked by the fact that they have extra bodies in their particular garages, where we don't have none over here. So a call-out here ripples throughout, or two call-outs, and I think not this, was it last Friday? Yes, it was last Friday, I think it was fourteen call-outs. So therefore, it was people that were not there, that was probably one of the worst days I think I've seen um of delays in buses, there was over fourteen buses. When we talk about delays and I hear the parents of the here, I think one parent says her middle-schooler has a problem with the buses, but a knock on wood, the high school hasn't had any problems as of yet. In certain families, it's not even the same household, some are experiencing delays and some are not. So there's just, there's a head and flow and there's some inconsistency in how it's affecting and ripple throughout the district. It all depends on who calls out and who's on a permanent route and who has an open route, because as we're talking about the data, there's non-open routes here and some of those routes is, you know, they, when a call-out happens, it happens on a permanent route and we don't have a sub-driver, so we're combining the routes, so it does ripple here. But I will look to try to stream on that data the best way I can in order to make sure it shows a picture that is not the same picture that currently is here in Hamden Overhand.
Um your substitute drivers, the other districts?
Yes.
If they're not needed, are they available like?
We do, yeah, we pulled to ask them to come over, because I think Southwood Talon was off, um they had two P D days on the second and the third, and we came back Thursday and Friday and we used Southwood Talon drivers and substitutes to come over and help out in Hamden Overhand.
Okay, Mike, it's you.
Um so, I mean, we are in a bit of a crisis. Hypothetically, if we discussed and decided to go to a three-tiered system, practically, when could that be implemented, like as soon as possible? Like, is is it just not practical, it couldn't happen until the start of a new school year in September, or is it feasible to be instituted after April Vacation Week or after February Vacation Week? I'm just trying to, I mean, I've I've heard from so many parents and, you know, how Seth Klar, they, that that child that lost, and so I'm just wondering if we decide to go to three tiers, you know, what would the timeline look that, look like? Both the practicality from the buses, redoing their scheduling, and also from the schools adjusting their start times?
I would probably recommend the beginning of the school year. One reason I say that is you're going to have to make sure the information gets out to parents and families about the change in the schedule. If you're willing to make that move after February break, well, February break's right around the corner after spring break, then you're going to have to let families know as soon as possible what you're going to do and it's going to be a change in schedule. I don't know if that's a change you want to implement in the middle of a school year, um but I would recommend it definitely and definitively by working towards the beginning of next school year would be my best recommendation. I would not say after spring break would be your best bet.
I will weigh in on that, because part of it was also from the school's perspective. I would have concerns about our ability for staff to make adjustments, and we have lots of staff members who have children who would require childcare and I think making a change in the middle of the year would probably be not feasible for most of them.
Okay. Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Yeah, just to come back, so we have twenty-four drivers, we have twenty, we have thirty-three routes.
Yes.
On average, what is our average for buses being uh late with this present schedule, two-tiered system? Twenty-four drivers, thirty-three drivers?
So I had, I think it was twenty-six days in the morning and it was like sixty-some days, but it may be close to eighty now in the afternoon, so the average time is probably ten to fifty-five minutes. So pretty much for the late in the afternoon, I would say minus maybe five days since the school year, they've been late in the afternoon.
But how many buses are we talking about? Is it one bus a day, five buses a day?
I think I can answer that, um you know, I I guess we could calculate the average if you want to, but I I thought this question might come up, so I did ask Aaron to look back at all the bus notifications we made about individual bus calls, so not just by the day, but individual buses. And so far this year, we've made over four hundred and seventy calls about delayed buses.
But some of those are repeat buses, they were correct?
Correct.
Okay.
What do you mean repeat buses?
It's the same bus, like if it's bus fourteen that's been there every day, he, if you're asking about every call that's been made, his dad is correct about four hundred and some calls, but it's it's the same bus fourteen, because they may not have a permanent driver.
If it's the same bus fourteen, ten days in a row?
Correct.
That's ten days that we had
Correct.
Delayed buses, right? So we had four hundred and seventy
Calls.
Calls. So there's four hundred and seventy delayed buses, right? Or or either it's a shift.
Or it's about eighty days, uh what day are we in the school year this year? What day is today?
We're getting very close to end of first semester, so say eighty-ish.
So I would say seventy-five of the eighty, even in the afternoon. In the morning, I would probably say it's at least forty. It's less in the morning than it is, it's very bad in the afternoon.
All right, so if we switch to the three-tiered system, again, this is probably something that we can't do this year, so, but let's continue going down the track. If we stay with the twenty-four drivers and now we have twenty-eight routes, we're down five routes, but we still don't have four, we don't have a full
Well, you actually, you have one now, you have twenty-five, because one started on two today, so you're three short.
All right, so twenty-five, so we're three short. Uh how many are we expecting buses to be delayed every day from there?
It wouldn't be as many days with that, because I think we can operate with the confines we have. Only problems they're going to have with the number of people we have is still have call-outs, people get sick, whatever it may be, because we're still missing those spares and missing those subs. It's the ripple effect. It still will be some combined routes, but depending on how big the window is, I pro- uh to drop off and pick up, we may be able to fit that window in there and it's not as long as the time period, but it wouldn't be as many as we're talking about right now.
Of these twelve bus drivers that you have from the week of November uh twenty-fifth mailing, so we have one that's already started, right?
Yes.
We have uh six that are in various stages and three that are studying for their permits.
Yeah.
What is the estimated time that we can get those nine drivers that haven't started yet into into driving?
As long as they make it through the C D L training, some people do not make it for whatever reason, it depends on how many come out of that drop and I would estimate we probably could have some in there before February break and probably majority of them after February break. Because they have to have sixty hours behind the wheel if they never had a C D L license and if they're coming back and getting recertified, it's forty hours behind the wheel.
So of the, let's say there's ten of them that I see here, six, three and one, right? Of those ten, percentage-wise, what what would pass? Would you have an average of like?
If we got four of those or five of those, that would help us out severe.
So how is that the average of like?
Yeah, I mean, it's about fifty percent to sixty percent that most people may get through it for whatever reason they don't, because we're not being paid while they're being trained, so a lot of people lose the lack of income from that particular piece. They get paid once they're finished the training, so that's another piece of it.
So if we get uh, you know, five drivers from there, one we already have, hopefully four more?
Yeah.
That'll get us to uh, yeah, thirty, uh, yeah, twenty-nine drivers, so we're still down four for the two-tiered schedules for the rest of the year. But hopefully that would cut the number of leads in half, but still.
It will still help, because what we also do is we have uh assigned a couple of routes out of the East Long Metal Long Metal Garage in order to pick up. I think our actual um your Mecco and maybe even your Volk bus is picking up out of the East Long Metal Long Metal Garage, so you can take probably two of those off of there from that perspective, so you can subtract down that you would need in that particular piece, so it's really thirty-one, so we're probably closer if we get those four to five So we're trying to put some plate, things in place for the rest of the school year to try to make sure that we can at least try to have small victories with better timing for our routes. So right now, East Long Metal Long Metal Garage is picking up some of the slack.
And does that change the um going down to twenty-eight routes, make it going down to twenty-six routes?
No, right now, we we've, that's a whole nother thing, we would continue to have enough drivers for the twenty-eight if we go to, if you go to the three-tier. For the current, what we're doing right now with the thirty-three, we're trying to help out with the East Long Metal Long Metal Garage. We're thinking if we get all those people that you're seeing in the hopper and the fact we just have someone to start with the twenty-eight routes, we should be able to cover everything. Because if you did the math, you would have twenty-nine, so you would have over what we needed for that point. So if we even get more over the summer, we would have some spares and we would have some substitutes also too. And if we needed to keep those routes out of East Long Metal Long Metal, we'll keep them in East Long Metal Long Metal for the time period. If we needed to do that, we went to the twenty-eight routes.
So it it seems to me that that voting on a three-tiered system is, it's, we've got to see how this plays out, right? If if we have these people, plus we have the December ninth mailing uh that comes out and there could be some coming in from there, um are we doing any mailings in January, February, March?
We're doing always every month, we do mass hire and then some of the organizations I talked about, we continue to work with, so the flyers are still going out, so we we project more people to come in. If you really look at it, if you think about it, if we have twenty-four right now, we're going to have, would be four down. So the four down we have right now, we go to twenty-eight, you're talking about, or it's only three down because the twenty-five came in. We have those six there, if we say six out of ten come in, we've already met what we needed to get from that perspective, but we still want to have more of a complement, we want to build our substitute pool up and a spare pool up, because once again, if you right, had the exact right number, someone to call out, it's a ripple effect. We're back at the same point, trying to piece mill routes together in order to combine routes. In a perfect system, we want a driver and spares in order to be able to cover any route In a perfect system, we want a driver and spares in order to be able to cover any route on our own, and we also want that app for parents to have, that they can actually see when the kid is picked up and dropped off in the afternoon.
So, I, I believe I understand where you may be heading with this. And if this is a situation, let's say we were operating our own bus route, our own bus company, then I might be saying, well, yeah, why don't we just wait and see how this class does, see how many come through the cohort, and see how, um, what kind of impact that has on what's currently happening. However, one of the things that we're also up against is that since the services are provided through the collaborative, there is a rule, um, about when you need to make a decision about any, um, substantial changes that impact transportation, because that impacts the budget of all of the member districts. Because essentially what happens is the overhead associated with transportation is allocated to the districts through their assessments, much like we assess towns, um, based on the number of buses in the route. So, if we reduce the number of our buses, it means the overhead cost for the other districts is going to go up, and in order for them to make their budgets, the rule is that it's supposed to be done actually before January, but since so much of this stuff has been up in the air, we could get a sort of an agreement that we could have till the end of the month to decide what to do. But I don't know if we'll know what the impact of this current cohort is by the end of the month.
I mean, we'll have some idea how much closer we are, but the thirty-first would still be good. And I guess the thing about it is, obviously, the June, by June thirty, your budgets have to be a group. So, that gives enough time from a perspective, and like you said, even from the issue of the things that are going down, the dividend that you have from last year's situation, which is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, um, I think we can convene another meeting with the superintendents and, and business directors to come over once the decision is made, if you choose to go with a three-tiered system, and let them know how it does impact their assessments, because it is gonna change their budget in the transportation assessments.
Are you saying we might be able to go? Sure. Go ahead.
So, also to echo, I think, on what John was saying, the other, the other thing that we have to think about is that, like, every year, we've been hearing about vastest of drivers in the hopper, and we're recruiting him. We, we get more drivers, but we seem to be losing just a few more than we get every year in the summer. We've been short bus drivers since COVID, and then every year, it's only been getting worse. So, I think it would be, it would be overly and unduly optimistic to think that we can bank on more drivers in the hopper fixing the problem. Uh, I, you know, I, I guess I'm getting towards what Mike is saying. I think the responsible thing for us to do would be to switch to the three-tiered system to allow us to function better with fewer drivers.
I was also going to say that while it looks, it appears that with a three-tiered bus system, there will be significant, well, significant cost savings for us, there will be some operational efficiencies. Um, but knowing that we, I understand that we can't implement, we would not be able to implement that until the following school year. Um, for the remainder of this school year, has, um, have you looked at, I'm sure you have, but have you looked at, um, making the routes more efficient with community bus stops? Um, making sure that the routes, um, are the most efficient that they can be in order to minimize the bus tardiness?
Yeah, we're looking at that. We have a new transportation system, we learned from Versatans or Diversa, and our actual, um, interim transportation general managers looking at those routes to make sure that they're most efficient. We continue to look at those on a regular basis and try to make sure that they are in the, in the, in the best, rooted, the system rooted the best way possible. Um, so, we're trying to make sure even in the spring, that we're probably gonna try to roll out some, talking to the superintendents, how we can even put this back to ground zero and see what people are wanting to ride transportation, because I think sometimes what happens is you keep using that same list, and sometimes people drop off the list, or sometimes people are not riding the bus. If we can take some of the people off that are not riding the bus and choose not to ride the bus at this point in time, they can come back anytime they want to. That would make it more efficient and more effective too. So, we need to have an ongoing list to make sure who's actually riding the bus also too.
Um, I wanna ask the same question in a more pointed way, because I think this may be a local culture issue that you might not be keyed into. So, I have heard from parents, um, in, in the district who've said, you know, the, the buses could run more efficiently if we weren't doing as many door-to-door transportation. We have a lot of cul-de-sacs in town. There was a time when students would go to the end of the cul-de-sac, you know? But there are cer, always exceptions for certain individual situations, et cetera. But, um, there are a lot of door-to-door pickups now. I've also heard from drivers who've said the same thing. So, I think the question about, um, whether there's more efficiencies in the way students have picked up is more than just sort of the technological question around the, the software, but like, the culture of the pickups in the town.
So, I guess my question back to you is, from my previous system where I come from, there were no door-to-doors except specialized transportation. So, for me coming into this is, what your norm in the past has been, I don't know. So, if that's something that the districts have allowed, and you're saying to me that we can make community bus stops, where you're not gonna have the pitchforks and the fires coming after you or me because of the fact that I'm now moving from a person or a family that's had a bus stop in front of their house for two to three years, but I know if we made a communal bus stop at a certain place in a safe place, that would be more efficient and more effective for us to do. So, if, if that's the will, and you're actually giving me some type of privilege to say we can do that, then I'm more than likely, I will do that, but I just gotta make sure you know the culture and climate better than I do, and some of these bus stops and bus drivers do complain about the fact, why are we picking up so many kids right there in front of their house? That's not just a Hamlet, Wolverhampton thing, that has been a district thing that's gone on as a past practice in a lot of districts. I can speak to Lelo that has some of that also too. And I agree with you that some of those things are because of safety reasons.
Sidewalks.
Yes. So, if that's the issue, if there's no sidewalks or whatever may be, or safety, or if there's a big snow or something like that, however, there may be something down the road that we can identify that they can walk down to and have enough time, that may still work also too. So, I don't know that particular piece and, and how you think that would have an impact or ripple throughout if we made that change.
Well, I guess what, what I, my thought on that is if we could just have some information about feasibility of that, like, where could it be done safely? You know, and what would the impact be? So that we could share with the community and they could do their own calculus, like, you know? If I have my child picked up at the end of the cul-de-sac every day, it means I'm going to pick him up fifty minutes late, twenty fewer times during the year. Maybe that's a good trade, right? But if it doesn't ever make an impact, then it's not a good trade.
We had, my daughters were in school, they, uh, we had to go three-tenths of a mile to the end of the cul-de-sac every single day for all their years. And the year after they left, the bus started coming up the street, stopping in front of everybody's house, which is what it's been doing for about the last twenty years. So, certainly, I was there at the end of the street, waiting for the bus about three-tenths of a mile away, and then since then, come up to everybody's doors, stop one at a time.
When, when you have someone who comes in, these people, these twelve drivers that we have coming in, or eleven or whatever it is, uh, they get their CDLs. Is there, is there some contract that they've signed that they, if they leave before a certain period of time?
No, but that's something we're working on, because that wasn't implemented when I came in, but we're looking to do that, because what people will do is take their training and go somewhere else.
Right.
So, we're trying to prevent that particular piece. So, we're working on that with our attorneys to have some type of language that you lease, oh, it's, I don't know, a year or two years. I've seen it done when you're actually, in one of my previous districts I worked in for teachers, that we have helped to go get their master's degree, whatever, that then they have, have guaranteed to owe the district three years, but if they leave before that time period, they have to pay the ten thousand dollars back they took in order to help them get their master's degree. So, we're looking at some type of language in that particular piece, and we're gonna let people know upfront, this is what the expectation is, and this is what you owe us.
Is that something that has to be done through the union, or is that something that you can just put in?
No, we're not gonna go to the union for that particular piece. We'll implement it for people that come in, because technically, once you start training, you're not part of the union.
Okay.
You're not, you just, you know, not, you don't fall upon the collective bargaining agreement.
All right, now, here's, here's the big thing on everyone's mind, okay? We have twenty-twenty-five up until July, okay? And, okay, three-tiered system for next year, and that'll hopefully make things better, but what are we doing for these people now? You have people that have jobs, you have people that have careers, you have people that have babysitters, and, and just trying to handle this. It's, it's too much, because they don't know when it's gonna happen. It's not like, all right, every Thursday, your bus is gonna be late by fifty-five minutes. It's like, hey, surprise, today, this is gonna happen. So, they're right here, so, so, so talk to them, tell them what do I say? They're right here, they're asking questions.
As we're trying to do, we got more drivers coming in. You had the one that came in that had an impact. We're still working with other organizations to see if we can get more people. And I understand it's a time period it takes for people to get through the CDL and the seventy training. We have farmed out some of the actual routes to East Long Metal, Long Metal, um, and for that particular piece. And we're also trying to use spare drivers and drivers from other, other, just other garages in order to help out. So, that's the things we can do right down in that particular piece. We're other looking at other avenues too, to see what we can implement. But if the main thing, if we can get some sub-drivers and the people in. We do have some people that are now coming back that, um, from out of state, and they need less time behind the wheel for CDLs, and they have asked to come back to Wolverhampton. So, when somebody said it was non, not desirable, I don't know where that came from. Um, and the other piece too, we're trying to change within our contract that people that have, uh, not, or failed a drug test, our own people, that they have to go to the, they have to go to a clearinghouse and go to the clearinghouse to get rehab, to go through it. We have something currently in a contract or was in a contract that we couldn't hire them back. So, we've been talking to the union that we would hire those people as long as they showed everything they've gone through, and they've been cleared and been cleaned. That would give us another pool of people too. Um, a lot of people, as people know, that, uh, transportation is still under DOT, which is federal. So, obviously, one of the first things we ask people, whether or not they partake of, of marijuana, because that's eliminated some people, not a lot, but some, especially younger folks. And I'm not condemning or condoning either way, now, the people doing their own time is their own business, but obviously, we can't have that anybody under the influence, um, driving the bus. So, we're trying to make sure that we can hit different places and different things in order to get people in there. And the people that already have CDLs that come across, they don't have to have much time behind the wheel, or if they have a CDL from another, um, actual company, we can play, put a, uh, plug and play right away. So, we're trying to talk to other people, other garages, people that are unhappy, or whatever may be, or other situations, people, bus drivers know bus drivers. So, it's about bodies. We're trying to get bodies besides the fact that we're trying to circulate our own bodies in other districts to help out.
What about Governor Healy? Oh, just gonna ask one last question, one last question I have. Uh, Governor Healy, I know that we have them involved, right?
Desi's involved, and then, it's the thing about it.
But, but, but didn't we have the National Guard after COVID?
They're not gonna do that, I asked the person.
They did it before, why aren't they doing it now?
Because it's not an emergency, as she told me. So, this is the thing about Desi, I asked her a question, and Desi has no teeth when it comes to certain things. So, they're in the picture right now because of the fact of it isn't. I asked her, is there a possibility of, and I remember during COVID, they were out driving on the eastern part of the state, the National Guard was doing it, and I said, is this the situation? And she clearly stated, no, it was not.
Continuing on with those, uh, basket of possible solutions, if you will, is, would it be a solution if you know you have a route that's going to be uncovered for a period of time for the rest of the year, to subcontract that to another provider?
We looked at one, you sent me an email the other day, we looked at it, it's a relatively new company. I don't know what it's about, but we're looking into that particular piece and see, to see whether or not they can, you know, maybe piecemeal it for the routes that we have open. But we also have to do due diligence and see what this company's about also too. I don't want to, um, you know, exacerbate the problem, because it's already at a full tilt right now. So, that company needs to be somebody that's reliable and somebody that we can actually depend on.
Um, I would like to take the next few minutes, seven forty-five. Um, if anyone that's currently in the audience has a specific question or is looking for additional clarification on something, I'm opening the floor to you for the next few minutes. If you could just speak into a microphone?
Yeah, right over here.
So, I, I just have a question in regards to the, the grouping of the bus stops, which I think is a great idea, um, but I think that someone that actually does it should look to see what sidewalks and where people live and how in a town plan. Um, I'm only speaking from experience starting from this year, that, um, like I stated before, my child was told that he would, because he was within a certain radius of Minnetonka, he would be considered a walker. However, I live on one of the busiest streets in this town that has multiple car accidents, literally a lot is up for me, and an intersection with no sidewalks. So, um, we really need to focus on that, if not just a system of saying, we can group these people together, but I, I think it really needs to be collaboratively with a, with a town sidewalk grid and, and for everybody's safety. Um, and, and I'm just speaking from my experience from, from this year with that. Um, and I'm just, I'm very, um, I'm trying to be optimistic about the workforce, and I understand, you know, e- everyone, I think the world is short-staffed, in my opinion. But, um, I, I really do think that we need to come to some sort of a, a, a resolution here though, um, for, for the rest of the year, um, and that follows, I think.
Thank you. Can I just make sure they speak into the microphone? Thank you.
You, you can pick it up.
I'm here.
You can pick it up.
Um, so, a couple of things. I guess one of my concerns.
Sorry, Sean, one second. I mean, hold on a second, should we?
Sorry. One of my, and I'm sorry, do, do you want me to announce my? So, one of my concerns is, is that there's a lot of conversation about, we just need bodies, we just need bodies. And I'm hearing a lot about, well, we're, we're, we're changing, you know, our policy on this, or changing our policy on that. Um, as a parent with kids in districts who ride the bus, I, I don't want to decrease the policies that ensure that the people that are driving our kids around are qualified to do so and are the best choices to do so. So, it's not just a matter of filling a seat, it's filling a seat with a qualified, appropriate person. Um, so, I, I would just wanna be cautious about sort of that, um, that conversation and making sure that we're not just trying to put somebody in the bus so that we just don't have a late bus. Because I'd rather have a late bus than a bus that's being driven by somebody who shouldn't be driving children around. The other piece is, which might help us out for the rest of the year, if you were to put it out to the parents, um, is to look into some type of an opt-out program. Um, or, you know, because I know for my purposes, my two youngest don't take the bus at all, and my two older ones only take the bus home. So, if I, you know, if the school were to be aware of that, and the bus incoming was to be aware of that, so that they didn't have to account for my kids when making the routes, I think that would be beneficial. And I'm not the only parent that's doing that. It, it just, it works best for our family. I know that there are other families that have that same situation. So, I think that there's ways for us as families to be able to help out the district in figuring out how to efficiently use the transportation that we have. Um, and maybe we can focus there as opposed to this kind of just put bodies in the seats. Thank you.
Okay, also, just wanna reiterate the route safety. My child also has to cross a very busy street, and I already hate it anyway, um, because apparently, drivers just like to go, like, if it's ninety-five hundred, then it's a road every day. Um, that's the one thing. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask about, so your drivers work twenty-four hours right now, which means that they, they do not qualify for benefits, is that correct?
They're already, they do qualify.
They do qualify?
Yes.
So, it doesn't matter about the amount of hours that they?
Yeah, but they're, they're our employees, but they're over that twenty-hour threshold. So, they're probably making more, that's their average daily hours. They may make more, over that if they pick up extra shifts, so they are qualified for benefits.
So, they're getting medical, they're getting dental?
Yes, they get all that, yes.
Okay, good to know. Um, my next thing that I wanted to, to say about the safety and making sure that, um, that, I, I'm sure that you, you vet them.
We do courses with significant background.
And the Department of Transportation is very much all for you.
Right. And we do random, and we do random drug tests. The only reason I stated what I stated earlier, because I said I'm not condoning or condemning it, is you do lose people, especially younger people, with the legalization of marijuana in Massachusetts. I'm not, we don't want anybody under influence behind the wheel. It's no different if somebody is driving after Super Bowl Sunday, Monday morning, they didn't stop drinking till two o'clock in the morning, they should be calling out and should be behind the wheel of a bus. So, we wanna make sure we have safety, and that's a priority for us in that particular piece. And I just don't want a warm body behind the wheel driving the bus. I want somebody that's qualified, that's certified, that really wants to be on the bus as opposed to that particular piece, because it's tough driving a school bus with a whole bunch of screaming kids going down the road.
No, totally understood. Um, the other thing that I would just say as well is that, um, ooh, lost my train of thought. Okay, that's it.
My apologies if I made you lose your train of thought.
No, not at all.
So, I had issues mainly in the afternoon with my son being dropped off or being at school for an extra fifty-five minutes, and paying for a school program, and it's very hard to think about paying that money if I'm not actually utilizing that program. It's also hard, and I tried to reorganize one day, knowing my son was going to be late, but I was home. I had him take his original bus home, which is the bus he takes every morning. The driver didn't know he was on the bus and brought him all the way back to the bus station. He didn't get home until four twenty in the afternoon, and he came home in tears because he was scared, and I didn't know where he was either. I don't know what happened, I don't know where the confusion lay. Apparently, because my son doesn't normally take the bus home, they rerouted his, the bus driver chose to reroute his route to get back to the station. But aren't they supposed to check the bus before they head back to the station to make sure the bus is empty? And it didn't happen, because my son made it all the way back to the bus. And it didn't happen because my son made it all the way back to Boston Road before he came home.
Did he tell him he didn't know that your son was on the bus? Okay. They should be doing a, a check of the bus.
And that didn't happen.
Okay.
And I guess maybe I'm confused on the timing and I understand you're talking about like three tiers. Looking at the timing of the way the schools and you're saying there's a high school bus and a middle school bus, seems like we're already running on three tiers, but they're not really working properly. So if we're scheduled to have the two-tier time, why are there different routes for high school buses versus middle school buses?
Because if we're combining routes right now in order to do that particular piece, there would be sets of times where the three tiers in order to do that particular piece. So the reason they look like there may be three tiers now as opposed to it is the combination of all the routes where they combine in order for it to make it work. Because if we didn't combine the routes, some kids wouldn't be getting to school at all. And that's the way it looks.
It just, it just seems like in the morning myself, I hear the bus go by, the early bus. I don't know if it's middle school, high school. But it goes by my neighborhood once and then I see the driver, I see the bus sitting on the side of the road waiting to start the elementary route for a good ten, maybe fifteen minutes. And I get it, it's, that's the timing he's supposed to do. But if that's happening, is that the only bus that that's happening to? Do you require kids still getting the same?
Correct. It may be so, like you said, you have some drivers that already have permanent routes and they're finishing their routes early to go to their next tier. Then you have some drivers that are combining routes to do that. So he may be a permanent and he's finished his route. And we're hoping if that's windows long enough, now with the new contract, he'll be able to pick up extra route if he has enough time in that particular piece. So it just depends because some of the ones we have are not permanent routes right now. So they're combined ones.
So I'm also hearing that the drivers are, are not wanting to drive Wilbraham because they wanna have a three-tiered system. So they're getting more hours. So why can't we offer them a bonus to drive in Wilbraham? Maybe not getting the thirty-six hours, but still getting paid that or guaranteed that.
Yes, we need to negotiate that. And I think with going through a three-tiered system, they get the hours that they want. We have three-tiered systems in some of the other member districts we have. So as um, School Committee member Collins had asked, we'll look at the data and see whether or not the latest entirety is the most particular piece. So we're trying to make sure for that particular, because we can never, as I said earlier in my presentation, the last time we had a full complement of drivers, the thirty-three drivers right before COVID, and that may have lasted two months. So going with this particular piece, we're around twenty-four. We probably can definitely get to twenty-eight, twenty-nine for that particular. And that gives us the more opportunity in order to make sure that our, our extra routes are more efficient and people are getting to school to and from on a timely manner.
I guess my other concern with the three tiers is I don't know about how the timing would work out. Looking at the times you put up there, that's gonna affect all of us elementary school parents that have jobs, that already have to either be in late or adjust their times. Not because the bus is late, but just because of the timing that their child gets picked up. Now you want school to start a half hour later. That's, that's not, that's not gonna be feasible for a lot of families.
And I understand that, but that's the reason why there's a projected times and I talked to Superintendent Provost. He will come up with the times where we'll work for particular families and people. I had to give you a visual what we were looking at. So those times are not set in stone. Those are times I wanna give a visual to say what it would kinda look like and what the projected drop-off and projected pickup time would be within the window time period. So I, we're not set in stone for those particular times.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to make a comment? Thank you very much. Um, School Committee, is there any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I would like to know how competitive the hourly rate is that we pay compared to surrounding.
The only one that's higher than us is First Student, which is in Springfield. I was First Student in Almer, not First Student in Ware, not Almer or Belafonte County. So the one that's higher is Springfield. And the reason that's higher because as you know, and I think you work in Springfield, you're driving in the urban setting. You're driving in the city of Springfield as opposed to a Hagone, a Tua as opposed to a Hammond-Wilbraham, a Southwood-Tollan or Lullow. The only thing that may be close to a Springfield may be West Springfield. So that's the reason why theirs is a little bit higher.
Um, wait just a minute. I'm hearing, um, so I work for a company that has a lot of drivers and has talked about this. And I, I hear people who say that they, uh, they have left working for us to go and they get thirty-three dollars starting an hour at a place that's not in the door. Thirty-three dollars an hour seems to be the intrigue that I'm hearing from other companies.
Um, my granddaughter recently became an EMT and they have a program. You earn while you learn. They pay to be trained. Not the rate that they get once they're actually in the job, but um, that may be something you might wanna consider. And I, I would say, you know, commit to three years. I'd say commit to five years. Uh, because that's a skill that we're giving them and they, they, you know, eventually have probability of going to a place that pays higher. If they're comfortable driving around city streets, it would be better cities.
We do something similar to that. They do get paid after they finish the training. So they're not getting, like you said, earned as they learn on a weekly situation. They get something at the end once they finish their CEO. So you almost have to prorate if you're doing for a particular piece, if something was there. Instead of the fact that somebody comes in, if you're earned as they learn, they say it's a six-week program and whatever you're doing, they stay a week. Are you paying them for that week's pay as opposed to the end of the six weeks? So your damage you do, your damage you don't. So we're trying to figure out, and maybe that's another way we look at it and we do it at a prorated ratio. This is what the lump sum for the total amount of hours, because it takes people a different amount of time. It depends on how fast you learn for those sixty hours behind the bus. It could take somebody, uh, you know, three weeks to do it. It could take another person six weeks. So it just depends.
And, and what's the, what's the commitment they have to make to stay with?
We don't have anything right now. There was nothing in place. When I came in, we were working on putting something in place. As you said, it's gonna be a minimum at least a year from that perspective, but it could probably end up being two or three years. I do think there should be something in writing because we are giving you this training and the skillset and you use it and take it and go somewhere else from that perspective. Like go to, I don't know, UPS or FedEx or even Amazon or something like that. And it, it doesn't benefit us. So we need to make sure that we have something that's binding in contractual form that you owe us this amount of time.
Seems like the only thing you really could do, if this makes a difference or not, uh, would to, for like the rest of the year, could be to combine those stops that uh, John was talking about, is and look at how many places. From a parent, rather than waiting forty-five minutes at a big school and rather go to four or five other parents and waiting to be in a spot at the end of the street, whereas the school bus makes a lot fewer stops and could that speed things up enough uh, to counteract the lateness? Now, just look at the whole ruling and see where could we safely have parents wait for the time, private time, as opposed to having to stop every house? Could you save the time?
We can definitely look at that. I work with the district to see because I think as I'm hearing from some people, there are no sidewalks in some places. So we're gonna make sure that we have a safe, as you call it, a safe communal bus stop. And that's one of the things we wanna make sure. Like I said, I don't wanna exacerbate the problem if something else happens. It has to be a safe spot. But I think it's gonna take some time to see, not a lot of time, but to see where the sidewalks and things are.
In Hammond, there's lots of cul-de-sacs. So that's pretty safe. There's no sidewalks. If there are cars on the street, just go to a cul-de-sac. That's where people wait.
So I'm going to ask if the School Committee would like to um move on voting after, after this conversation. Are we looking to move to vote on moving to a three-tiered system? Do you want to table the conversation for another time?
I'd like to make the motion that we commit to moving to the three-tiered system for the start of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
And can we also look at, looking at the possibility of communal, communal stops to speed things up for the rest of this year?
And I guess the question I would ask you with that particular piece, if we put those in, those communal bus stops will stay in place for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year too, correct?
That would be, that would be whatever the decision is, John or whoever else. Well, I would just say, let's take one step at a time. Let's either vote on, on the three-tiered system. And then if we do something drastic to, to have it, so if we make group stops just so we can get through this year, so parents don't have six, you know, random, you know, cancellations or late buses, you know, every day. I think this is something that we're just gonna do right now to, to just see if we can get through this year with uh, bringing that number from six down to zero. And if it does work well at the end of this year, that's a trial run. I mean, if people don't mind it, it could certainly speed things up and make things more efficient next year too.
Can I ask, Superintendent Provost, is there any way, well, I can call you. I heard maybe CD and Morris CBS or if you want, but that's a question of, one of the parents brought up the opt-out program. I know there are a lot of kids that are not riding the bus right now, probably because of their lack of quality service we're providing. But some of them have other reasons that they may only ride in the afternoon. So if we had a bead on those particular families that don't ride or only ride on certain days or whatever may be, that would help with some efficiency too, to fall along with the projection of having group bus stops too. I don't know what the best way to attack that is, but I think that would also be beneficial in looking to make sure we get through the year, the rest of the school year in a better way.
I think that was an excellent suggestion and it's one that I, um, unless the School Committee is opposed, would like to follow up on. I think you could also provide some information about long-term solution. I mean, if you, if it turns out that there is a large portion of parents who's committed to continuing to drive, um, it could uh, open up other options that you might wanna consider a later date.
Right. But we should have it, so say like Karen who was up here speaking, right? And Karen said, I only need the afternoon for two of my kids. I don't need any other buses. But let's say something changes, that she'll always be able to come back and say, hey, listen, my situation has changed. I'm gonna need the bus these additional times and be able to get her seat back. Is that something that we can pivot on like quickly?
That's not a problem. I mean, obviously, if we know, then as soon as we know at the bus company, we can put that in place. Uh, this is the main thing. Cause one, one of the things we talk about, not just handling what we're having in other districts, is sending out a annual notice about people that are going to participate in transportation on a yearly basis. Way before the school year ends, even if you're gonna project and it could be something to reform that says, I only have two kids that ride. This is what they wanna ride these are the days. Because I think we're at each and every year, we're trying to build upon that old data we have. And that data may not be the most accurate data. So we're building routes and stops based upon kids that obviously we take the seniors out of there. But there still may be some families that have changed situation wise that they may not, like you said, need a bus every day where the kid only rides home on the afternoons, only rides on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So that the more accurate our data is, the better our routes can be and more efficient our transportation can be. So we're talking about developing an annual letter or some type of annual form for parents to complete that we can then use to build our routes over the summer.
Yeah, but we also, again, gotta make it clear to the parents that if they say, yes, I'm gonna do this, but if situation changed.
Or they can always, we're not counseling them out and saying they can never ride the bus. As soon as they notify us, we could put something in there that if something changes, this is the number or this is the email that notifies to let us know that this is what's gonna happen. And within a couple of days, up to three days, at least seven to eight hours, we can get the person back on the bus.
All right. And I've been trying to get a map of uh, of where we have sidewalks and where we don't have sidewalks. I, I, I know who to call tomorrow morning at Down Hall and I'll get it and I'll send it to John and he can forward it on to you. Hopefully we'll have it tomorrow morning.
Appreciate that.
I think in the past too, we've had situations where there are community stops, but I think there's been arrangements made with drivers or they've just, you're able to call the transportation company and they're able to um stop in front of your house.
I could put a cab bus one at it. That's the rule of the people, I mean. Someone else, yes, the Pittsburgh should be after me.
The only thing we really need to be careful about with the uh, going to like neighborhood stops, which I, I'm not against, is that, you know, it's even more of an commitment that bus to arrive there at the time it's supposed to. Cause now we don't have people sitting at your house looking out the window looking for the bus. We are someone who may walk five or ten minutes down the road and be standing out in the elements, which in Lincoln, aren't always very pleasant.
Uh, one other thing I'll, I'll make mention to folks as a reminder relative to um, to transportation in regional school districts, is we get a transportation reimbursement. One of the caveats of that is that you have to uh, provide transportation to seventy-five percent of your students in order to qualify for that. So we have to, you know, in an opt-out situation, we have to be cognizant of whether we still meet that requirement and then therefore qualify for that reimbursement from the state. So we, and that's a pretty significant reimbursement of our cost. So we wanna be thoughtful about that as we think about opt-out. I'm not saying we should or shouldn't. Um, I think there's other things we can discuss as far as that's concerned. That's a simple thing to keep in our minds as we think about that option.
When is that snapshot taken? Is that October, a Sims? Tom, when does the state take the snapshot of seeing when you have your seventy-five percent of your ridership?
So you do an interview report for the previous year and you uh, you signed an attestation that you are doing it. And if they audit you, you have to prove that you've provided that. So um, it's a tricky thing because I think when they originally put that in place, they were thinking people were gonna have somebody on the bus that takes attendance every day to make sure that you have seventy-five percent, which is, I don't know, in what universe they thought that was gonna happen? But, you know, if you are providing it to, you know, if you can, can demonstrate that you're providing it to seventy-five percent of your students, then I think that's sufficient. But they can test you at any time. But you, you do, when you file your, your final financials for the year, attest that you did uh, provide the service to, to kids, uh, at least seventy-five percent of them so that you can qualify for that reimbursement.
And group stops will help that. You know, if we have a group stop and there's two kids there, but there, you know, we have space for ten, that's okay, you know?
Okay, thank you. So we will move to vote. So we'll, we'll begin. Sheriff?
His name's Zach. Go quick, you're on.
The, to move to a three-tiered system for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
And that doesn't preclude the other thing about what we talked about for speeding up the rest of this year.
Correct, correct. Sheriff?
Hi.
Tim?
Yes.
Sean?
Aye.
Lisa?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself, aye. So motion, Carrie, seven, zero. Thank you very much, Tom, for your time and for the information. And for all their questions and comments this evening.
Yeah, thank you.
We are going to continue on these like that.
Actually, can I just make one, do we need to vote on doing the group stops or, or getting that rolling as fast as possible? We don't? Okay.
Okay, so we are going to move on to um, feedback in the twenty-seven and hour on the regional agreement. So this is the discussion possible.
So this was uh, something that came from Attorney Swinney uh, today. And it is advice to the question you posed at the last meeting regarding possibility of assuming the school as a district's property. There were three options that he outlined in that memo. Basically, one would be to um, status quo. One would be to assume the building and then one would be to make a modification to the leasing agreement.
Any questions, discussion?
Yeah, there was a couple of interesting things in there. So option number one, we don't wanna do, right? Option number two is I thought what we would have to do, we would have to make it, you know, Minnetonka to regional middle school, right? But this third option of whatever, make it a regional middle school, but don't make it a regional middle school. Like that we don't take ownership of the building. I understand why is because the building is quite old. It's gonna need renovations and stuff. But still, at the end of the day, it's not that we take on that debt. It's the towns that, that we have to take on that debt. The thing I found interesting from that uh, from that memo was in a uh, in a footnote that said that as a regional school district, we can take loans out for building in buildings. I thought that that had to be done through the town. I didn't know that's something that we can actually take loans up for repairs and stuff like that.
So yes, one of the things with the creation of regional school districts is that it allows them to have this sort of full authority to borrow. Uh, but we can't borrow for a building we don't own. We can borrow to buy a building and we can borrow to fix a building we own, but we don't own Wilbur Middle School right now. So we couldn't borrow for the purposes of fixing the middle school if we don't own it as a district. So you can borrow for the purposes of things you own, but not for things you don't own.
So we can't do a loan, say, for all of our buildings to, to pave the uh, the, the, the parking lots that disassembled or fix all the roofs or something like that because we don't own them? We can't do that?
Correct.
Now, when we took, when the loan was taken out for Minnetonka, did the School Committee take that out or did the towns take it out?
Uh, the, the district actually holds that bond and then we charge the district, the towns uh, resets them for that piece. So any capital projects we take up for, for property we own, so we could be playing field, it could be a parking lot. But at buildings we own.
The debt service.
We, we can own the debt. And, and we have bond rating just like the towns and all of that same sort of stuff. Um, but if you don't wanna do it for the things that you actually own and take possession of, so.
What is that bond rating at the moment, you know?
I do not. I'm not sure. If we haven't borrowed money in a long time, we probably haven't gone out to do it because you have to pay somebody to do the rating. Just sort of ironic in a way, but.
I learned last night that they said it was about fifty thousand dollars every time you put a bond down.
Yeah, there's, there's a whole host of charges that go with that. Uh, that sounded a little high, but I'm not surprised. It's, it's an untrivial amount of money. So you wanna be thoughtful about it. Um, but you need to go get a bond rating and things like, you know, uh, open situations, your reserve balance, you know, all those kinds of factors when they consider, just like they do when they evaluate a town.
I'm not sure that the, that the town of Wilbraham would want to give us the building, even if we wanted to, since the ownership of the. I'm not sure. I think our only option probably is to have a modification of the lease of the building that would allow there to be some sharing of capital expenses.
Actually, what I had heard from the towns and at meetings, and I don't remember specifically who had said this, was that there was not a problem of giving us the schools, but because the town's rec department uses the property a lot, they had a question about can they give us the building and not the land? But I believe from that memo that we received today, again, I think it was in the footnote, that we would have to own the property and the land, as I thought how it was worded. I could be wrong. But, and, and, and again, I, what I, my response was, of course, we could reach an agreement with the Wilbraham Rec Department that they can use whatever, you know, properties they can use at whatever time they need to use it, I mean, as long as it's not during the school day, which I don't think they're doing. Rec projects during the school day, anyway. So I didn't see that as a problem. But we have asked the towns several times, and we have not really received an official response. Maybe we should send a letter to, to Wilbraham to ask them that we are looking at different options, and then say, you know, is this something that the town would be willing to, you know, give us for a dollar or whatever, however it works out, the, the building? And I'm, I think that there are no loans on the middle school, right? Even though we did the roof, I don't think there were loans on it.
Are you asking them to sell us the building for $1?
Yeah, when they, when they, it's not how it has to be done. I don't think they can just give it to you. It doesn't have to be for a dollar, right?
No, we'd wish for a dollar, I don't know about that sale, but it's not scarring the builders.
I think if the town would sell us a building, a school district, they would want to get fair market value for the property, so that the cost of purchase, you know, so that Hamden would be buying their share of the property.
And I think the fair market value of the building, Mike, I think you were there, wasn't it like $7,000?
I think it was 28 or 29 million dollars. Isn't that Lisa? It was 28 or 29?
I'm sorry, I thought it was 78 million dollars. I did not think it was 29.
That's a little wrong.
At least one person is hoping it's longer than 27 million. I don't know if that's correct, though. I'm not a real estate person, so.
Did I say 10,000? I made a mistake, sorry. After the school bus situation, I, I'm just picturing buses driving around my neighborhood.
So typically, when we've done the dollars, then the lease.
Right.
So we leased it for a dollar, but I don't know that we would be able to acquire the building for a dollar, or, or produce it for a dollar.
Could we, could we reach out and see what they say?
I do know that they discussed the assessments of the buildings, and when the assessment came back, it was in the, like, I think it was like 27 or 28 million dollars. So we have a look at the options.
To respond to Mr. Kennedy's question, I would draw your attention to the memo that I submitted prior to this opinion coming in. I'm really starting to worry about timeline on this, because we have to reach, we have to reach agreement on what we're doing. We have to send it back to the state. It has to go through legal review again, and it has to come back to us, and we have to vote on whatever it is we want to, we have to change based on their legal review. Then it has to get to the towns at the time to get them warrants, and as you side in from this, it can take a long time to get an answer for a very discreet question. So what I had proposed at the time is, if the school committee makes a decision on one of these three options that it wants to pursue, then what we could do is vote that to the towns, you know, present it to the towns, and also have Attorney Sweeney work on trying to get that language into the agreement, so that if it's agreeable to them, we can move forward and get that to the state and start the review. Because this is the last thing that's remaining for us to get a final revised regional agreement.
We're looking to have this, to start telling me this, right?
So send an email out, say, "Here are the three options. We want to do two or three. Which one looks better for you?" I mean, which one do they agree with?
I guess, I guess the school committee could take whatever strategy it wants, but in my, my thinking about this, I would think the school committee would decide which one it thinks is in its best interest, and say, "This is the one we want to pursue." What do you think?
Does anybody have opinions on the email, on the, on number two or number three?
I think our only option is number, is number three modifying the lease?
Yes.
I think that's our only option. I can't see Hamden coming on board with shelling out a few million dollars to buy into the building, but hopefully, they'll, they'll lead our board to help me to get the capital, but over.
I'll agree with that.
Could we take out a loan to buy the building?
We can't buy.
That's getting answered.
So what I'll say is, we would have to, because if the regional district's gonna own the building, you would have to take out a loan, and then it would be assessed to the towns, and of course, this would be part of the purchase and sale agreement, because Wilbraham already owns its 75%. It's, really, the negotiation would be around what would be Hamden's piece, to buy, you know, to essentially buy their piece for the district. So it would be a situation where we, the regional district would take the loan, and then Hamden would be assessed to pay off that loan. Unless they want to take cash for the whole thing.
More than 20?
Just so I understand, would it be a 20% loan?
We have to look at what our current regional agreement is for the, you know, it's based on students, so it would be whatever the student count is at the time that the loan is issued. So we'd have to look at the actual, sort of, account of students in the regional district to balance it.
Oh, so what you're saying is that we would just have to finance the 20% that Hamden would, let's say roughly 20% that Hamden would have to pay of their assessment? We wouldn't have to do a $26 million?
Right, because Wilbraham already technically owns it.
Right, right.
It, it's, it's a bit of an odd situation, because regional assets are owned by the region, which technically means they're owned by the towns. So it's sort of, you know, a bit of an odd conundrum that way, but because Wilbraham already owns it, what we're doing is we're asking, you know, Hamden to, to buy that, their piece of it from a legal agreement standpoint. So the borrowing and the paying of that assessment, you know, to pay off that, that debt would be wholly borne by Hamden, because they've got to buy a piece of school where they already owns it. On the other hand, we bought a building in Springfield for some reason, you know, then both communities would be paying, you know, 820 roughly for their, their pieces of it. But in the circumstances of Wilbraham already owns that half, they don't really contribute to that, and they already have, so we're just asking Hamden to kind of cover their piece. So that would be the conversation with, you know, it's, what's the value, and then what's the appropriate piece that Hamden would have to be investing to, to, appropriately, you know, buy into the building.
Sean, what do you think the, why, why do you think we want to buy the building?
Because then we can do things like fix the parking lots, fix the roof. We can, we can vote directly to get things done, to take care of the building. Whereas when it's owned by different, if it's owned by Wilbraham, so Wilbraham's going to have to pay for everything, but then Hamden's gonna have to chip in 20%, right? But it, it's gonna be that way either way. But it seems like, I don't know, if I was Hamden, would I want to be paying for a roof and windows and a parking lot? And I'm from Wilbraham, so, I mean, would I want to be paying for that on a building I don't own and I have no interest in, other than my students go there this year? Who knows what happens, you know, down the road?
What's the age of the building?
197, isn't it like 1975?
I was gonna say, I believe it's early 60s, early 70s.
Oh.
So is there a new middle school in our future somewheres down the road?
Really, you brought exactly what I was gonna bring up, which is, you know, we have to be thinking about long-term. Five years, 10 years from now, you know, the mission might be, it's time to build a new regional middle school, or at least do a major renovation and expansion on the, on one of the buildings already in the district.
And we wouldn't be able to do that if we didn't own it, right?
No, actually, so in.
If it was gonna be a renovation and expansion, but if we were gonna build a new middle school on the high school campus, for instance, right? Then you really wouldn't want to go build a building that's being out now.
So option three is actually like a, he said, it's like Sean had said, that it's kind of like a happy medium. So he said, "Well, this may seem essentially the same as option two with respect to capital costs. It has the advantage of making it less, a less permanent move, and allows the district to change locations and approaches from year to year without permanently taking ownership of WMS, Wilbraham Middle School." So this may be attractive to the extent that there exists, that there exists any plans to construct a new middle school at some point in the future to educate all middle school students in the district. So there, that sense, the concern about needing to amend the regional agreement as to the location of education for students in grade six through 12 should be part of this plan. So purchasing Wilbraham Middle School, if we, if we voted to do that, which is option two, then it's more permanent, and then when you look further down the road, it kind of helps us.
I know that we were looking at putting seventh and eighth graders here, and I, I forget what year was the year that we would actually be able to fit all of them in. I think it was last year or the year before. So I think technically, if I'm correct on the projections, we could move seventh and eighth here. Is, is that what we're talking about, about like, let's not commit because we're gonna be moving?
I know there was a plan that talked about seventh and eighth grade moving here, but I really, as someone who spent days and months examining this question, don't think there's any way to put those grades here. That's why, you know, the planning committee landed on eighth grade only.
Right, but we're, we're talking about putting a building here on this campus for middle school. You mean it's own building? In five or 10 years down the line, if someone said we want to build a middle school, do we have space on this campus to put the middle school without taking away any, any of the sports kids?
You would need an expert to tell you the answer to that question. You'd do a study to find out. I don't believe in that question.
Michelle, would it add to the point that, you know, option three allows many more options to remain open? Or cancel us into predicting for the future?
But again, we would hand it, oh, yes, on this, when they're, you know, they're renovating my house just because they're using my kitchen, you know, this year. I mean, I'm just.
I think that Hamden would, is less likely to vote for having to pay 20% or 27 million dollars, write a check for that, or have to take out a vote to pay it, and that's in capital expenses.
We would take out the loan, we'd pay it, and then that would just be assessed like we did with the, with Minichoke. We are doing Minichoke. Shouldn't we ask Hamden before we make a decision?
We want to stick to the timeline. We're picking the one that has the most options, or we're not gonna make it.
I'm sorry, I, I don't like to be rushed on a decision. If we have an opinion today and we can decide tonight, I, I don't believe that we're in that much of a time crunch.
If we want to go, if we want to renovate the regional agreement to the towns and we want to make.
I think that's still a ten year.
Well, maybe, but anyway, I think it's. This is the final decision that has to be made as part of the amendment to the regional agreement that we are trying to bring to both towns. I mean, as it is for the mid-January, we also have to kind of float this to both towns. They have to have exposure to this and understand what these changes are, how it, how it will affect them.
Can we wait two weeks before we make this vote, so we have a chance to run this by Hamden and Wilbraham and see what they say?
But we want to pick what, what we want to float to them.
Yes, we want to pick what we want to float to them, but what if that's not what they want, and they're gonna be against it, and then it doesn't pass? I'm just saying, like, has anyone floated this by? Would Hamden be willing to do that? You have, your, your students are now at Wilbraham Middle School. You're gonna be paying 20% of all the costs.
I would rather float to them, we decide first, and then make these things, and then we can discuss them again.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I think that, the way you put that.
Option three lets you change your mind, they run. Option two doesn't.
We have this, this question, the magistrate.
So I think with us making a decision, then they have the opportunity to discuss it among their boards, their council, and they come back to us in two weeks and we get another regular discussion. But I think we need to take that first step. So with that, any further discussion? Does anyone want to make a motion?
I have a question. It's not about what we've been talking about, but it is about the regional agreement. And in reading the lawyer's letter, if, if we put that language in there, then every middle school student has to go to middle school. And Wilbraham Middle School. However, we are pursuing a, a stopgap measure, a testing, that will allow us to work with other communities and have a limited number of eighth graders go to high school. But that wouldn't be allowed as the agreement stands right now. Right now, it says you're going to the middle school. And I am concerned about, if we get this program up and running, which is gonna offer some training that is not available right now, what happens if we have more parents who want to go, then there are seats, and I go back to my old gargrels. You know, we have to think about this, because the agreement's gonna be the agreement we've got to live by, although we've been in violation of it, I think, in my mind, since we gave away TWP. But I, I think we need to look at that and create some language that allows, if we can get this program up and running, and it is attractive, because it's gonna offer things that are offering to people in the middle school. I don't want to see the same thing happen. Everybody wants to leave the middle school, go to high school, and end up in a position, and we have no definitive language that, that gives us the authority to say, "No, here's the limit. You could be unaware of this," and I think, you know, or we can't even institute the program because it would be in violation of the agreement.
So there are two things there. First of all, let me just say, thank you for being protective of the new program. It's really close to my heart, and I'm glad that you want to make sure that it's successful. I don't think that the language we're putting in, potentially putting in the agreement would bar students from going to the high school, because what it says is students in grades six to 12 will attend schools designated by the school committee, I think. So the school committee can say, "This is the invasion program. It's open to eighth graders. It's housed at the high school. Eighth graders from both communities are accepted to the program and will be there."
Maybe I misread, but I thought, what I read in the language for the agreement was, "All middle school people, students who attend Wilbraham Middle School." And if that's the case, we need different language than that.
Right, I, I don't think it is. I mean, we can go back and take a look at it, but I think the two options were that students in all grades that attend schools designated by the school committee, or students in grades six through 12 who attend schools designated by the school committee, and then students from K-5 who attend in their own town. So I, I don't think this, this proposal language would prevent having that eighth grade program at that school. Now to your second point, which is about overcrowding, you know, like, are we just gonna recreate the same problem we have at the high school, at the middle school, at the high school through the program? One thing that I'll be sharing with you when I bring the application for the program to the full school committee is the, the provisions around capacity for students. And so one of the questions we have to actually specifically answer is, what do you do if you have more applicants than the program can, can handle? And what we've put so far in the language of the agreement is, in the event that there are more students than we can take, students will be assigned by lottery, so we can control it.
I would like to make a motion to accept option two, or go by option two from the memo of referendum to, from Attorney Sweeney. I had just got confirmation, I'm still waiting for more confirmation, that it's under 9 million is, is what the middle school would cost in total. That would be 1.8 million to Hamden over 20 years.
Sean, I just heard from one of the selectmen that the building was assessed at almost 28 million dollars.
I, I went to Todd Snyder, the financier, he thought it was 9. I, I went to Todd Snyder, the finance, and he thought it was nine.
So that is part of the...
That's what I thought too.
So you can send a text message now that you've opened that up publicly.
Sure, sure.
So you can be the whole thing between you and Doug.
That's fine. No problem.
Um, okay. Do I have a second?
If you're voting then, if this fails, we'll vote for option three or something else?
If it gets no second, then it has no attraction?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? So this is for option two, to purchase WMS?
I guess for, uh, for discussing, I'm in favor of option three, so I'm not gonna vote for this.
Okay, so we all... So what, what we will do is, um, roll a vote?
I have a question.
Sure.
Could you explain, um, what you're concerned about between the two options, two and three?
Um, I'm concerned that if we take ownership of the Wilberham Middle School, it will limit what options we have in terms of middle school buildings for the future. Um, I'm also concerned about the additional financial implications for Hampton and if it might sour down towards amending the regional agreement. Um, you know, I, there's no reason, if we do option three, there's no reason that we can potentially in the future buy the building. We, we don't have to buy the building. It's part of the initial agreement.
Okay, thank you.
But the question is, will Hampton pay for it when they don't know? That's all.
Okay, any other discussion or do you want to vote? Okay, so do we all vote? Sure. Voting on, on option two, which would be to purchase, um, for the district to purchase Wilberham Middle School. The building and the town.
And we were just talking about the option three this morning. So my vote is no.
Tim?
No.
Sean?
Aye.
Lisa? No. Rich?
No.
Mike?
No.
And myself, no. Motion fails. One to six.
I'll make a motion for option three.
Okay, try the second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, questions, concerns? Correct. Roll call vote. Cheryl?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Sean?
Nay.
Lisa?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries six, one. Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to the subcommittee update. So we'll begin with the curriculum subcommittee. Lisa?
Okay, um... Lisa, if I say anything wrong, you can correct me when I condensed it. So at the last curriculum subcommittee meeting, um, Lisa Curtin and Nikki Remelhard-Moran, um, one of the district's leaders and coaches, shared a presentation on the Early Literacy Consortium Grant. Um, the purpose of the grant was to bring together our regional consortium of educators together for the purpose of advancing early literacy learning and teaching. The grant was awarded to HWRSD in May of 2024. Um, and the district hosted a gathering of collaborating school districts and sponsoring or sponsoring organizations to discuss the needs of school districts as well as needed teacher preparation for instruction of early literacy and intervention strategies. Um, funds can be used to support grant-related activities. For example, um, purchasing high-quality instructional materials and professional development and training activities. Uh, the collaborating school districts are ADALAM, obviously us, ADALAM, Dudley, Charlton, West Springfield, and Gateway Regional. And the sponsoring organizations are Worcester State University, Western New England University, and Springfield College. And, um, and there, there, there we go. And we don't have another meeting scheduled yet.
Any questions for Lisa? Okay, thank you. Um, we will continue with the planning committee. We have a meeting on Tuesday, January 14th at 5:30 in the district conference room. Finance, Operations, and Technology. Sean?
I have a couple of things. So we're having a budget roundtable meeting on Tuesday, February 5th, uh, either at 5:30 or 6:00 in the IRC here. We will have representatives from our, our state government, uh, Cooperlow Ash and Olivera. Um, and we'll be talking about, you know, what is, you know, just basically slamming our head against that wall again with, uh, the people that hopefully are doing the same thing we've seen with ours, but at least just to, to try to push some of this stuff. I, I really would, you know, it would be great if they would let us, you know, charge fees to bridge that gap, right, between what they're giving us, the regional transportation versus 100%. But then I'm talking to other people and they're saying, but if you do that, the state will say, oh, just give them less because they'll be able to go to their towns and they'll be able to go to their students and they'll be able to do that. So it's, it's a catch 22. We're damned if we, if they let us do it and damned if we don't. So I'm, I'm not quite sure, but it's something that we can then be, discuss more. And then, um, uh, so we, we have some work to do on our capital expenses to, to get into the town. Uh, we're gonna try to come up with a district-wide, like, okay, this is our push. This is what we want. Rather than this is what each building needs because of the price tag, because it keeps on getting deferred, 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 deferred. That it's just getting out of control. So we need to come up with what, what can they finance? Um, I believe what they said at the meeting is that they, they were interested in financing, uh, some of our projects, you know, for, for, for next year. But they put the caveat at that meeting, uh, depending on, you know, what happens with union negotiations and what comes, you know, with the inflation increases and stuff to our budget. So what I totally ask is for our budget, they're gonna kind of compare that to with, you know, how much money are they gonna have left over? If he sets the feeling, I got, but we're still gonna go at it. We're still gonna give them a, a, a plan like this has to go. And it, it, it's, it's interesting because, you know, we hear like, okay, um, let's just go another, another couple of years. Okay, we can, we can last on these access points like another year, right? And we can take the computers and we can stretch them out for another year. So case in point, and this is just a test pool of one. Um, my son, since day one, has been going and bringing his computer with issues and stuff like that every... I'm not, I'm not sure it's every day. I know it's like a week, every couple of weeks he's going and he's talking. And he has to, sometimes it works. He plugs it in to the computer, then he can turn it on and then he can unplug it or whatever. And it's just, sometimes he has to hold it for like five minutes and then do it again. And what, it's just like a whole, you know, uh, you know, rugging your head and patting your stomach and then hitting, you know, uh, power. So there, there are real issues, like how much time is my son wasting, you know, every day on issues? And he's not the only one. Um, so there really are costs to delaying technology of wireless access points, delaying technology of, of our laptops and stuff like that. And I know, you know, it makes sense to us. I'll just get another year out of it. But he's a kid with computers and he's not the best computers in the world. They're the, they're the, um, what do you call them? Chromebooks, right? And Chromebooks are maybe the cheap alternative, but I don't think they need to go four or five years, especially with kids' uses. So we really have to be realistic about, about this. So, um, so that's, that's just, uh, there will be some issues on how we can just put this all together. Um, and, and, and if I'm focusing on Wilberham so much, it's because Wilberham pays 8% and then, you know, Hampton would have the 20, but that 8% is a bigger pill, uh, to, to swallow. So that's why we're focusing more on that 20. Did anybody have any questions about, uh, any of this? Yes, sir.
I would just point out, um, as you recall, our budget wasn't fully funded last year and the price we took that was from the middle school Chromebook. So that's, that's the consequence right there. So thank you for sharing what it looks like from the student's perspective.
It's a real pain point. And as a parent, I, I'm like, you know, hey, listen, I, I'll, I'll buy a computer or two, right? As long as my son can get one, I'll get one from some, for somebody else too, maybe that, that his parents can't, can't afford it. And I'm sure that a lot of other parents would do that, but there's no mechanism to do that. And there, there's gotta be, maybe we can do something through what, you know, or, or, uh, the Wilberham, the Hampton, wait, Wilberham Hampton Academic Trust or something where, where we can just, um, you know, raise some money or if someone wants to put up money so that, you know, Mike, he can have a computer. And again, if I have to buy another one for someone else, I'll do that. And then, um, my student will get a, a computer and someone else will get one. But if, if we really need to come up with a mechanism because I think it can save us some money is that there's a lot of parents out there that will do that.
The one thing I'd like to add from our last meeting with, um, capital and finance was just that they, we had presented the, like a five-plus-year capital expense plan. And then we did agree that we would prioritize, um, what our, you know, needs were because also we would be utilizing the MSBA, um, except for rapid recovery. But it feels like, um, accelerated program. So I'm sure we should get that.
When possible, 100% of the time, yeah.
But it sounded like it was a really good, positive conversation. So we really wanted to work together and prioritizing our needs and making sure that those needs are taken care of and that they're fully funded.
Oh, yeah. Wilberham Capital is 100% on board. Like, they know they have the obligation. They know that, that things are falling behind. They know that they gotta do what they gotta do. It's just, you know, when you, when you got a bowl with a certain amount of water in it, which probably would help.
Um, when is our next meeting?
Um, Erin, do we know when our next meeting is?
We don't have anything.
Uh, maybe our next meeting is the, uh, February 5th. Um, we want to give our, our, our friend Dr. Slaughter some time to breathe, uh, and come above the water. Uh, he does have a, a budget that he needs to, to really just get into and such. So I think I'm more taking the lead from him. We had a very nice conversation today. Hopefully didn't take up too much of your time, Doug. Um, but, uh, you know, we will be talking a lot more and whatever we can do to help and support you. I, I, I'm not saying we can't do it. We totally can. You are doing an amazing job. But again, time crunches. I don't know if we can utilize Kami a little bit. She does have some good knowledge. And maybe, you know, can help because, you know, it's like the search. When you turn the power on, the search is right there, but then the power usage goes down just to keep the lights burning. So I think right now we're, we're searching for Dr. Slaughter over here and, uh... So if there's anything we can do there, I, I, I hopefully that we would do that. And that doesn't need a vote, does it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we will continue with the LPBAC collaborative representative. Lisa?
Nothing. I'll present next time for my last meeting.
Thank you. Um, negotiations subcommittee, nothing to report at this time. Policy subcommittee, John will be presenting on Mike's behalf.
Thank you. So first we have second readings on a number of policies that were modified to conform to the changes to regulations around Title IX. Those are AC, non-discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation. ACR, non-discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation. ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. ACA dash R, non-discrimination on the basis of sex, under Title IX including sex-based harassment. ACAB, sexual harassment. ACGA, civil rights grievance procedure. ACGB, grievance procedures pursuant to Title IX. And this is the version that was recommended by a legal counsel rather than the version that was recommended by the MASC. Next, we have first reading of graduation requirements, IKF. I think I, I would like to just take an opportunity to say a minute about this because it's an opportunity for public education around this. This has been one that I will confess has been an educational experience for me. Um, in the days since, uh, the passage of question two, there's been a flurry of activity for districts to get their policies in line, um, to address, um, that. And there was more with than I thought. Honestly, I, I thought question two meant that students didn't have to take graduation, uh, didn't have to take MCAS as a graduation requirement. Still had to take it, but the result will be used for graduation requirements. However, the, uh, actual language of the, of the valid initiative said that the local districts had determined, had to create a standard for competency determination for students. And that's a language that I don't like at all because, you know, to me, it's unacceptable to suggest that any student is anything less than competent. But in, um, in the old way of doing it, students earn their competency determination by passing the 10th grade MCAS tests. And that was step one to getting a diploma. Step two was passing all of the, or satisfying all the local requirements for graduation. They still have to get a competency determination and satisfy all the requirements for graduation locally. But what had, the difference is now the districts each have to come up with their own means of, of students earning a competency determination. So in the proposed policy that we put forward, what we have are a number of courses that teach the concepts that were formerly part of the test, uh, that students took in 10th grade or ninth grade. And so our, um, proposal is for most students, the way they will earn their competency determinations by taking those courses as a part of their graduation, as part of their high school experience. That's step one towards the diploma. Once they do that, they still have to meet all the rest of the graduation requirements in the remaining years they have in high school. The other thing we put into the policy was, you know, alternative means for students with the most significant or involved disabilities to demonstrate competency determination. Because in grades three through eight, we have other means for students to demonstrate their skills, um, other than taking the MCAS. Most common one is the MCAS alternate assessment. And we wanted to make sure that if we had students who were able to master the concepts that are covered in the course, but were not able to demonstrate their mastery through just passing the, the courses as we expect most students will, that they would have another, uh, option. Essentially, it's a portfolio. So in our proposed policy, basically what we say is, um, students take specific set of courses or they complete the portfolio. That's step one towards graduation. Step two is take all the rest of the courses that are required for graduation. And then the last piece we have is an equity statement. This is a, um, is something that the district has been working on really since convocation. If you were part of convocation, um, we began the work that day. And the DEIB committee has been, um, continuing to need to revise the language to come up with a post, a statement for the district. This is an objective that's part of our equity improvement plan, which is part of our strategic plan. And we have it ready for you tonight. Our hope is that you would approve it. This is something that doesn't require three meetings because it is not a policy. It's just a statement. And so if, uh, it pleases the committee, I would read that into the record and ask you to adopt it as the vision of equity for the district. It says, "In our school community, we commit to creating a supportive and inclusive environment where everyone belongs. We work hard to remove any barriers that make learning harder for some students. We also stand up against racism, bullying, and all other forms of othering. Our goal is for every person to feel safe and respected at school so they can learn and grow. Together, we celebrate our differences and provide everyone the opportunity to succeed." So that one is for a vote.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. Questions or discussion on that?
It's really well-written. Congratulations, Sam. Yeah, you did that. It's very good. Thank you.
We will do a roll call vote. Cheryl?
Hi.
Tim?
Yes.
Sean?
Aye.
Lisa?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself? Yes. Motion carries seven to none. Thank you. Um, is there another, um, policy meeting scheduled?
Yes, there is. Right, it should be today.
I think it was Monday.
Monday, yes.
10:00.
Monday, February 10th, uh, 5:00 p.m.?
5:00 p.m., yeah.
In the district conference room. Okay, thank you. Um, anything to report on the LPBAC corporation? Mike?
No, there hasn't been any meetings.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to the superintendent's update.
Thank you. Let me begin with the January enrollment, which stands at 2,881, down one student from last month. Most of my work since our last meeting is focused on objectives that follow under the planning committee or district reorganization work. As we have all, as already been discussed, we've worked with attorney Sweeney and Natwater on the question of how to address the middle school and the revised regional agreement. I've also received... I've also received further feedback on our current agreement from the Office of Regional Governance, some of the issues that they flagged in the most recent communication are minor, such as the need to change some legal references that have moved to a different section of the code or inserting a word here or there. The most substantive feedback has to do with choice six, which was the section that had to do with middle school. And so now that we have direction from the committee on what to do, I will work with Attorney Sweeney to address the comments that were made, inserting language that is consistent with the vote that the school committee took and also float that to the towns. With your permission, I'll work with the attorney, probably under communications as well. As I explained in my January 6th memo, once we have everything exactly as we want it, the agreement has to go to DESI for a final legal review. If that review reveals the need for further changes, it'll come back to you for additional deliberation and votes so we can get a version of the agreement to the commissioner and the towns that passes legal muster. And even though the year has just started, Sweeney will be here before we know it, and legal abuse can take some time. So I think it's really important for us to stay focused on the agreement from here on out. So that will remain a priority of my work until we get that across the finish line. Another deadline that booms large is the February 6th due date for our Innovation Career Pathways Part B application. I'm happy to report that we're making us progress on the application, which is currently up to about 150 pages. We had an extremely productive stakeholder meeting on Tuesday. In addition to district staff, we have industry partners and higher ed partners present as well as representatives from Rivers East, Mass Higher, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank Rich Rediker for opening his corporate headquarters to us for the meeting. Our tagline for this whole, this project is reimagining high school. And a key to that is bringing industry partners on board as people who can offer important perspectives on what skills students need in order to succeed in the real world. So I wanted to kick off to take place in a non-school setting to emphasize the industry side of the public-private partnership that we're trying to build. And the meeting space was perfect for that. The purpose of the meeting was for our stakeholders to give me feedback on the draft application using DESI selection criteria. They gave me pages of wonderful suggestions that I'm adding to the next draft of our application. The final step will be to execute memorandum of agreement between the district and our partners in industry and higher education. I can share that we left that meeting with one memorandum of agreement signed from a dentist who wants to be part of the effort. Then the whole package will go to Doug to upload. So I know that surge, it's another part of the surge. Hopefully we'll get approval for our program from DESI by early April, and at that point, our efforts will shift to recruiting students and preparing to launch our first cohort next fall. And that's my report.
Just a quick question. On the last report we got on December 1st for enrollment, it said we had 2,883. And then on this report, it said we had 2,882 for January 1st, I mean, December 1st.
So is it changing one?
Yeah.
I don't know. I can't.
Okay. I hope we are tracking that there are two students less, or?
Yeah, I mean, changes of that magnitude are common. We, you know, have students move in, speed out all the time.
Okay. I thank you, sir.
Anything else for John?
Make a motion to accept the warrants. Oh, the consent agenda. I'm sorry. Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Your call. May I have a second?
No, again.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Okay. So we will do roll call vote. Cheryl?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Sean?
Aye.
Lisa? Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself? Aye. Motion carries. Six to no.
Before we go to executive session, and I know you brought it up at the beginning of the meeting about Gina Condon's passing, I've been on the committee for nine years. Gina Condon was a wonderful person. We have a lot of wonderful people in this district. But she was this tireless champion for our district. And I once talked to her, I said, so how did you learn, you know, grant writing and stuff like that? And she said, well, I saw a need. I saw something that we needed to change and we had the appetite for it. So then I put in the time. And she would go home and she would just be working all night to get this stuff done. And the joke would be that her husband would get up to go to work, but she'd be going to bed after working on all these grants. And every grant that she did was just like, yeah, we needed it. And she just put in the time to get it done. And, you know, I know she's been sick for a long time, but she was just one of those just amazing people that it's, we're really going to feel it. The world is worse off today than the Gina Condon.
May I, well, first, we do the need for executive session for citizens of master law, see chapter 30A, section 21A, free to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with HW EA or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public volume that chair sort of affairs. HW EA unit A, see empirical contracts.
So.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we'll do roll call vote to go, to move into executive session where we will be adjourning from. And before we do that, our next meeting is Thursday, January 23rd, here in the IRC at 6:30 p.m. So we'll do roll call to move into executive session. Cheryl?
Aye.
Tim?
Yes.
Sean?
Aye.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself? Aye. We'll move to executive session 9:10 p.m. Thank you.